Alright. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today, May 14th, 2012. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Goldberg.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
And President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall, it was posted on our Village website, and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To reply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple announcements tonight before we get started. I want to make sure to thank everybody for a really incredibly successful River Day. Five hundred volunteers removed over two thousand pounds of debris. And that was the Environmental Commission and a lot of our residents, some of our trustees who really put a lot of time and work into working with Public Works and organizing that. And I'm sure there'll be some comments on that later. But it was a very successful event, and we look forward to next year as well. Our annual organization meeting is on Monday, May 21st, and that's a special meeting for us to reorganize our board, which we hold annually. Many towns do that in January when a government is reformed, and that's basically what we're doing, obviously, on our schedule in May. Also, Village Hall offices will be closed Monday, May 28th, in observance of Memorial Day. And on Monday, at 10:30 a.m., will be our traditional Memorial Day service, and that will be at the Duck Pond. Also, just another announcement about single-stream recycling, which is beginning July 1st. We're going to be doing single-stream recycling where you can put your recyclables commingled in one container at your curbside in a toter, and you don't have to separate things out anymore. And hopefully, that will lead to more people recycling throughout the town. The collection dates will be the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, and we're going to put a little bit more information about that on our website, and we're also going to be sending out more information to all residents. Everyone should have gotten something in the gaslight about that. But if you do have any questions, you can certainly get ahold of us, but we're all looking forward to the switch over. We have one presentation this evening from Seton Hall University, from Adam Lerner.
Good evening. I'm just here for my monthly updates, kind of what's going on at Seton Hall University. Just to start off, SS County, on Thursday, April 26th, the SS County Board of Chosen Freeholders honored Seton Hall University's baseball head coach, or past head coach, Mike Shepard, by naming the softball field in Hibeepo Park. We had about 200 guests show up to this wonderful event that they hosted honoring this amazing coach that has not done not only amazing things for Seton Hall, but amazing things for, you know, the community around us. So, that was a great thing. We thank SS County for helping us with that. We also thank Deborah Davis Ford, as well as Village President Alex Torpe for attending. It was wonderful. Thank you. Monday, graduation. And so, we're very excited. We had an outstanding year at Seton Hall. We have the keynote speaker this year is Mr. Scott Chesney. He's the Executive Director of the Raise Hope Foundation, so he's going to be giving the keynote speaker. But we're very excited about graduation. This week is kind of the culmination of a whole bunch of senior events that's going to be taking place. We also have move-out, so students are going to start going home. And so, we're sad to see them go, but we're excited for the summer, and we're excited for next spring, because the numbers are looking really good for Seton Hall. Another thing I'd like to say is the Walsh Gallery is actually pleased to present the Linear Thinking. It's an exposition about lines. Supposed to be some amazing work, and that opens June 7th, 2012, obviously. From 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. is the reception, which is going to be taking place on June 7th, and it's in the Walsh Gallery. For those of you who do not know, it is open to the public. It's open Monday through Friday from 10:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. This year, Seton Hall is offering quite a few activities for high school students. This is something through a new school that we have. It's the professional, or continuing education and professional studies. We have a few different things. In the past, I've had a lot of questions about, you know, what do we have for high school students that are for, you know, for community members? These programs here were in direct response to that. We have pre-collegiate programs as criminal justice, theater arts, summer camp, we have TV news summer camp, introduction to video gaming programming, a whole bunch of other things. We also offer discounts for high school students to take credited courses at a reduced rate. So, we encourage you to go onto our website, check the opportunities that you have, and if you have a high school student this summer that's sitting at home, and they'd like to take a couple of courses and get ahead, it's a wonderful opportunity. The last thing that we have is our Ann Donovan Basketball Camp. As if you may know, Ann Donovan is our basketball coach, for our women's basketball coach. She is an amazing athlete, and she has done amazing things just in the basketball arena. Her camps are Saturday, June 16th, Sunday, June 17th, and then she has a day camp from the 16th through the 20th. So, if you have someone that would be, you know, would like to attend a basketball camp, we encourage you to check our athletics page. One of the last things I just wanted to bring up is our Seton Hall magazine. Hopefully, the trustees has already received these. Have you guys, does this look familiar, maybe? Hopefully. Alright. Hopefully, we get these in the mail very soon. But our Seton Hall magazine has come out. We also have this online. I would encourage everyone to check this out. It's a great magazine. This time, it's things we love about Seton Hall. It's the kind of perspective from the students, the alumni, the staff, and it kind of talks about all the things that make Seton Hall great. So, that's my update for this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we were scheduled to have our hearing for the 2012 budget. There are a couple things that have come up as of late that I'll let our administrator speak to, to explain a little bit more about that, and why we're not having the hearing tonight.
Thank you. As certainly the trustees are aware, and the public mayor may not be aware, under the statutes governing our budgetary process, we introduce, we send it down to the Division of Local Government Services to review it. Historically, there's a mandated 28-day period between introduction and public hearing, and historically, you would send it down, and they would review it, and you'd get their comments back with a couple weeks to spare to get them the information they needed. Due to, I am told, staffing cuts down at the division, we did not get our comments back.
In Trenton?
In, yeah, in Trenton, at the division. Until late Friday afternoon, we have put together most of the information, but a couple of the issues related to the reinstatement of the Sterling pilot, and some issues with the water utility revenues in East Orange Water, and the interplay of that litigation that it was not possible to get, and we don't have sufficient documentation. And consequently, we were not authorized at this point to move forward and adopt the budget. We are moving at full speed to get that information and try and move forward to get the finalization of the Sterling pilot in particular. And as soon as we can do that, we'll then get this on for public hearing, because we're certainly anxious to get this adopted.
Barry, since the public hearing was advertised for tonight, I mean, should we go ahead and if there's anyone here to speak on it, have them speak, and if anyone else can also speak at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think people have come out, and as a courtesy of recognizing that they've come out, I would certainly recommend that you allow people to speak rather than just make them come back. But there will be another opportunity when the public hearings continue.
So, the process, just so people can understand, that once we introduce a budget, the process by state statute is that it goes down to a department in Trenton that, who has the, is required to review all the details and particular documents on our budget, and it is only after they release it and say, okay, everything is in order, then it comes back to us, then we can vote on it. And so, it's stuck down in Trenton. I just tried to simplify it so people understand. Okay.
And as our administrator mentioned, people can, people are still free to comment on that tonight. The only thing that won't, that isn't tonight is the statutory definition of a public hearing. Obviously, we have two public comment sections tonight, and people are free to comment on the budget as any part of that. But the requirement that we have a formal public hearing where we then adopt the budget finally after that won't be tonight, it'll be hopefully, May 30th.
Now, if we've advertised the budget hearing, we can open the budget hearing and take comments and closing.
Right, and continue it.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I do have a question. Can we do, open up the budget hearing next week, since we do have a meeting, a special meeting? And expedite the project?
We're trying to keep the organization meeting, you know, pretty strictly to just the organization.
Yeah, we have a problem in delaying the budget. We now can't do any capital improvements. We can't go out for advertising. We're just stuck right now in waiting for the budget to be approved. And we have major road projects that are pending capital budget, and we don't have any funds in our capital improvement fund, so we can move forward with it.
Yeah, but unfortunately, we can't do anything until it's released from Trenton.
No, but he's saying if there's time, we could do it next week. I mean, I think you could open the hearing today, not close it, continue it. You could theoretically continue it to next Monday. If between now and Monday, we get all these issues resolved, and get all the information in, and get the green light, then you could hold it and even adopt on Monday. If, obviously, if it's still not yet resolved, then you would continue it again.
Right. And if we have to make changes, we may have to go through the whole cycle again anyhow.
That's correct.
So, I would propose that we would open it if you have, leave it open, and if we have the opportunity for next week, advertise it that way. And if it's been approved by the DCA, move forward with it.
Okay, we can certainly do that. I don't think there'll be any structural difference to the meeting tonight regardless of whether we do it or not. So, we can certainly do that right now if we'd like to open up our meeting tonight for hearing on our 2012 budget. So, at this point, if anybody from the public who wants to speak about our budget specifically, if you, I don't know if we have the sign-in sheet in the back. I imagine it's pretty full. Well, we're going to, we're going to do public comments right now for this anyway. So, sure, thank you. So, if anybody wishes to speak about the budget, please just come up to the podium and read your name and address. This is the fullest I've ever seen, the sign-up sheet. So, we're going to ask people to keep your comments to three minutes tonight, to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. This is just the budget.
This is just the budget right now. Can we speak to a specific item in the budget? This is the budget. You can speak on the budget, anything to do with the budget.
My name is John Perkett. I live at 661 Longview Road.
You got it.
Sorry? Can't hear me?
Just talk right into the mic.
John Perkett, 661 Longview Road. I am here to speak about the budget and a particular item on the budget, which is the funding for the CCR. I am concerned that what we are seeing is a subversion of government process. The way I understand government is supposed to work is the government is supposed to identify those things that they need to do for the citizenry, which they represent. If they can't do it, they would seek organizations or companies to do those services for them. I have not seen this governing body identify services that they want to have done that they cannot do, which the CCR would do. Also, if those services were defined, they should go out for an RFP, such that any other organization who could provide that service would be able to bid competitively for providing that service. I looked at the proposed service agreement that the CCR has put before this board, and it does not look like a service agreement to me. It looks like their standard PR listing of the kinds of things they do. I don't see any deliverable in it. I don't see any metrics in it. I don't see any dates in it for when these things are going to be done. I don't see any provision for withholding funds if they engage in activities which are inappropriate, such as electioneering, partisan politics, engagement in school board policy. They have come before this board and basically badgered the board consistently for the past many BOT meetings, and I suspect you'll see it again tonight. And if they are trying to engage the community, what they are actually doing is disengaging us, because they are wasting this board's time consistently over and over and over again, when they knew last summer that this board had agreed to cease further funding. They have no plans for self-sufficiency. They admitted that the last time. And this is just something that we're going to keep seeing over and over and over again. There are many organizations in this town that provide very vital services to
Thirty seconds.
Everybody in the community, and I don't see them coming before this board asking for handouts. They do it by raising money by, from people who see that they provide a valuable service. We have been told that it's only a dollar or two out of our pocket. Well, let me put it a different way. They are looking for the funding equivalent to all the taxes that one house pays in South Orange. And that's another way to look at this, and I don't think it's warranted. Thank you. And I would ask you to vote no for the resolution to fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just come on up.
This is still the budget hearing?
Right.
I'm Ben Salmon. I am a resident at 325 Beaker Street. I'm the owner of a business in downtown South Orange. I'm disappointed that the downtown recruiter position is not in the budget this year. At the 2011 budget hearing in September, it was cut from the budget at the last minute. I'm told for compromise, actually, there were three or four items related to the downtown that were cut from that budget. I came and spoke. We had a conversation. I was told there was nothing for that budget that could be done, but that in 2012, it would be in the budget. There were no concerns at that point raised. There was a straw poll hearing on the dais, and unanimously passed, that everyone said it would be in the 2012 budget. It is not in the 2012 budget. The Cit Advisory Board also recommended that the specific recruiter money that had been discussed in the past budget discussions and hearings, that that money should be contributed to, you know, the recruiter position money should be gone to a CIT. And you, you know, at the last couple meetings, this has been brought up, and it said, well, that's the CIT's job. A CIT was not created for the purpose of just saying, oh, you know what, it's not our problem anymore. Let the Improvement District do it in the downtown. That's the equivalent to saying, oh, well, let's spend other people's money and other people's time to solve the problem. I was on the Cit Advisory Board. I was one of the people that helped recommend that that happened. And one of the reasons I had this exact discussion, and the response to that in September at the last budget hearing for 2011 was, you're right, Ben. We will fix it for 2012. It's not been fixed. You know, at your planning meeting, you said one of your top five goals for the year is the downtown. Creating a CIT does not achieve that in and of itself. You were asking business owners and building owners to spend more of their money, and the Cit Advisory Board recommended that if you're going to do that, you need to spend more of your money as well. And so, I believe that that should be in the budget here. You know, I suppose I could have done what other organizations have done, and brought, you know, 20 people to this meeting, and, you know, kind of engaged everybody, and said, you know what, let's, let's argue this. You know, we would have gotten
Thirty seconds.
On both sides of, you know, people who were for CIT and pro CIT coming up here. And I just, we're finally building momentum in the downtown, and I think that would be destructive, and I hate to spend my time being destructive. I'd much rather spend my time being constructive, which is one of the reasons why I volunteered to be on the advisory board, volunteered to be on the CIT board. And I just, I'm seeing now, basically, what a lot of the critics of the, of the CIT predicted now. It appears as though it's happening, and I'd like to see that money in the budget.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, Ben, I agree with you 100%.
Trustee Gould, if you could save your comments for later in the evening, I would really appreciate that.
I tried to get this on the agenda. I put it as an agenda item. It's not appearing as an agenda item, so I will bring it up under New Business tonight at the end of the meeting.
I'll ask the trustees to save all of their comments, if they do have any, if they'd like to add anything under New Business, they're certainly free to do so. Thank you. Then why do we have an agenda process to put things on the agenda if they're not put on the agenda when they're requested? If you'd like to discuss that, you can certainly bring it up during New Business. Right now is the budget hearing. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Robin Fields. I own a business at 67 South Orange Avenue, Robin Ross. I'm here also to speak about the business recruitment position being pulled from the budget. I echo Ben's sentiments, pretty much everything I had written down here to say, he said. But I also want to come here tonight to really ask to consider that be put back into the budget. I, too, served on the CIT Advisory Committee, and one of the things that we discussed on the CIT Advisory Committee was business recruitment. Even though it was one of our top three most important things that we felt the CIT should handle, it was really not considered to be the forefront of that budget until the end of year two, possibly year three, because we had decided that the CIT should attack the beautification and cleanup of the downtown before trying to recruit business into the downtown. It needed to be cleaned up. So, the reason why I ask you to consider putting it back in is there needs to be a partnership between the village and the CIT. Now that we have a CIT and the board is in the process of being formed, the village needs to partner with the CIT. If we are not in partnership, it's not going to work. The CIT cannot handle this in the beginning, according to what we mapped out. If the village were to hire a part-time, even a part-time recruiter, the CIT would eventually take over that position. But there is nothing in there to even start. If you start, and you start small in this year's budget, it will build while the CIT is building, and then eventually, the CIT can take over that recruitment position. But to leave it off completely would be a huge mistake. You want to keep the momentum of this downtown going, of the vibe. Everything that's happening is flourishing. Don't let it drop off, and don't disappoint the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's still about budget items?
Oh, yeah, this is about a budget item. This is about Youth Net. Is that, that's a budget item?
Yep.
I'm Miriam Sumner. I live at 417 Clark Street. I'm here to talk about maintaining the full $15,000 for funding Youth Net. As many of you know, I've served with many of you on the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Advisory Boards, and
I'm sorry, Miriam, he's flashing a light. I don't think we have a microphone.
You have to speak.
What?
He can't hear. It's not picking up.
Oh, what do I do?
Just make sure you talk right into it. It's
Right into the mic.
Okay, how's this?
Good.
Okay, so, I've served with several of you on the Recreation and Cultural Affairs Advisory Board, and as you may recall, and for others to know, we always had a constant problem to solve, which was that we weren't engaging everybody in our recreation programs as hard as we tried. And many of the, one of the problems we identified was that we just couldn't get, we couldn't engage everybody in signing up. And we've solved a huge problem with that, with the Extended Enrichment Program, which Youth Net runs at the middle schools. And we run lots and lots of clubs, including chess, cooking, step, knitting, cross-country club, movie critics, literary magazine, fantasy baseball, fantasy basketball, art, and homework help, which is now given by teachers. So, the So the staff at the Extended Enrichment are teachers. $3,000, cutting $3,000 out of Youth Net would mean we would lose seven clubs, and that we might not be able to serve 100 kids that we're now serving. I, I'm so proud of what Youth Net is doing. It's been an answer to a dream that we've been able to really reach so many kids, and so many kids of diverse interests, and we have a student here who can speak about Youth Advisory Board a little bit, but some of the kids are actually determining the programs, and they're coming up with stuff that's more interesting for them than we would have thought of, than we would have thought of. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam, by the way, we will be discussing that later this evening, there is a resolution that we'll be discussing.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, I'm also going to talk about Youth Net, I'm sorry, I have a cold, so-
Could you just read your name and address into the record, please?
Camilla Tidelman, I'm at 437 Hillside Place, and I've been on the Youth Net Board for six years now. In four short years, Youth Net has helped 1,000 local children learn how to swim, play chess, write poetry, run cross-country, and to camp overnight. They have developed close relationships with teachers who run every single club, and the local police officers who teach them forensic science. And each day, 50 of them play basketball after school. Youth Net has improved the lives of hundreds of kids so far, but these children are at Maplewood Middle School, not in South Orange. In South Orange Middle School, Youth Net has only been able to reach half as many children. This year is the first year that we will finally, we are finally beginning to catch up, but now that will change. Why the difference between the two middle schools in the same district? In 2009, Youth Net won a large Department of Justice grant that was secured by the town leadership of Maplewood. As was stipulated by the grant, most of the grant's funds were invested in programs for the children of Maplewood, although Youth Net did use some of the DOJ funds to benefit South Orange children as well. Because South Orange didn't secure a DOJ grant of its own, the Youth Net program at South Orange Middle was at a disadvantage from the start, and still lags behind its Maplewood counterpart. Even so, the program has been a tremendous success, engaging 250 students quarterly in 14 clubs. Unfortunately, the DOJ grant ran out two years ago, and we have had to rely solely on the yearly $15,000 donations of both towns ever since to keep it running. Cutting 20% out of the Youth Net budget will undermine the program at SOMS once again. We could lose as many as seven clubs. Besides installing teachers every day as homework tutors after school, one of the best things about Youth Net-
Thirty seconds.
-is that we have been able to hire district leaders to lead clubs. Diane Malloy has conveyed to the committee already that Youth Net is working hard to become financially independent at the end of 2013. This year, Youth Net took over the administration of the custodial aftercare program at both schools, which should generate some independent income for us. Youth Net has plenty of other programs too, besides for the high school students. Finally, unlike the Coalition on Rafe, Youth Net was never informed of these impending cuts.
Thank you.
Throughout this year, our budgeting and programming have been based on getting the full $15,000 from South-
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, my name is Fred Biffett of Maplewood.
Get a speaker.
This is good. One of the things I think I can say about all of you is that I count all of you as my friends. You and I have worked together over the years on many initiatives together. Trustee Bauer and Levinson, we worked on environmental matters and energy efficiency matters, most of which were designed to save money. Trustee Rosner and I worked for many years on consolidation of services, and quite frankly, if the vote had been the same in Maplewood as in South Orange, we'd have saved millions of dollars by now, and I apologize again to you for all that. So be it. And Trustee Goldberg and Trustee Gould and I have been forces for fiscal restraint at the Board of School Estimates meeting, in fact, Trustee Goldberg and I voted the same against the budget last time. Somebody else should have, but didn't, and it would have been different if that person had, but we'll let that go.
And you'd like me to vote for what you're saying right now? Okay, go ahead.
You be guided by what you think is best. Okay, okay. So I, this is something, and last year at Maplewood, I was the member of the Township Committee who said, "We're going to have a zero budget this year." Nobody else was for it at the beginning, at the end of the budget process, everybody was for it. That was my parting accomplishment, I thought, on the Township Committee, we had a zero increase last year. So one thing I can say, I think my record reflects that I understand the value of a dollar, especially the taxpayer dollar, and I'm here to talk to you about why I think Youth Net and the Coalition are incredible values when it comes to the taxpayer dollar. Now, Youth Net has been spoken about by a number of people, I won't repeat, but one thing that's common to both organizations and all of the nonprofits that we support in these towns, is that they provide an incredible leverage of taxpayer dollar. For one buck of taxpayer dollar, you get the services of literally hundreds of volunteers in all of the organizations, and multiply that by all of the dollars that we put into these organizations, we are multiplying the effect. It's a great value, and nobody else would be doing it. It's because these volunteers have the spirit, have the energy, have the desire, that we get these things done in this community, and that's what we're famous for. I'd like to say this about the Coalition. I could talk about the value of the marketing program, the touring committee, the advice to parents of schoolchildren that we give, but let me just tell you one thing, because I've said this to the Maplewood Township Committee about the Coalition, just one event, the Martin Luther King Celebration, that happens every year. Last year, 500 people attended-
Time.
... Prospect Church. The looks on the faces of those people was incredible. If you had seen, and I don't know how many of you were there-
Thank you.
-there were many.
Thank you.
I'll be through in a minute.
Well, I can't let you continue, if you'd like to speak at another public comment section tonight, you're free to do so, as anybody else is. We have to be, for I'm sure, as you know-
What I'm going to say to you is this, and I'm going to finish. That event is an incredible reinforcement of the market values in this town, in Maplewood and in South Orange. That event, that kind of spirit, is what translates into real market value dollars, into tax base, and into tax rate.
Thank you.
That sort of thing is what the taxpayers of this community want. They want their market values to be stable, the Coalition gives it more than any other organization. I urge you to support the Community Coalition, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
And again, make sure to remind people, when this alarm goes off, that's three minutes, and that means the time is up. There are other public comment sections tonight, obviously people who haven't had a chance to speak yet will be given first priority in those, but if someone would like to speak again, they are free to do so, but again, I ask people to respect the three minutes.
Hi, my name is Mark Delzman, 262 Parker Avenue, Maplewood. I came to speak about Youth Net. I am part of the Youth Advisory Board, and I came to say that, I can't, I'm going to keep it short, so, Youth Net, for me, I feel like, well, I moved here freshman year, I'm a senior in high school. I moved here freshman year, that was four years ago, and I haven't seen yet a program that is able to give the youth a voice, like, as much liberty as they do. I started going to the YAB meetings, I believe, the middle of junior year, so I've been a part of it for about a year and a half. And in that year and a half, Youth Net has given me a lot of leadership qualities, because with Youth Net, there's one big event that we always do bi-yearly, is called the Coffee House. And with the Coffee House, I am able, me, I am able to organize it, I set up all the bands that are playing, it's a little get-together that we have, and bands play, people come to see the bands, there's refreshments, everybody dances in the place, we have that at the Barrett Center. And this, I guess, opportunity has helped me grow as a leader, because I get to organize everything, and I think that it's a great program to give the youth a voice, so they can have a say in what's going to happen, if we're going to have an event or whatever, for fundraisers for Youth Net. And I think that as much as a crunch we are in now, to take out 20% would make that crunch even worse. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Diane Malloy, Executive Director of Youth Net. I'm here for the third time to urge you to support Youth Net in its entirety. You know, this has been difficult for us, because we were under the impression that we were funded, and so we have developed our programming and some of our local initiatives with that in mind. And to learn that we could be cut 20% kind of puts us in a precarious position, because we have planned things this year in an effort to try to be self-sufficient. And to cut us in a year when we think we're on the road to obtaining that is kind of like throwing the baby out with the bathwater, which I've said here before. You know, we're a young organization, and we're really, really trying hard to make a difference in the community, and give those students a voice, give a population of people, kids, that don't have a voice, a real voice, and I think we've been pretty successful at that, and we want to continue to do that. So I'm here to urge you to fund us fully this year, and hopefully I will not be back next year, and if you could have seen all the emails I got from parents when they learned that this was happening, you would be amazed. There's a Board of Education meeting going on tonight, so some of the teachers that wanted to come couldn't be here, they wanted to speak on our behalf, and there's a concert at the middle school, so some parents that did want to be here aren't here. But I have to tell you, the impact that this program has had on the community is huge, and we want to continue to maintain that, so again, I urge you to fund us in the full amount this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Hi, good evening, my name is Ross Fields from Robin Ross, I also serve in the Main Street, South Orange Board, as a merchant liaison. I'm here to speak about the business recruiter position again. I, you know, I speak to the merchants on a daily, weekly basis, I hold merchant meetings, I hold monthly merchant meetings, that is, so I feel I have the pulse of the merchants and what's needed in this town presently, and what we're lacking is a business recruiter to focus on, bring more relevant businesses to this town. You know, there's some good core businesses that have come in the last four or five years, we just need to build on that. I know the Sid is going to help bring some good things to this town, but as far as business recruitment, that's a full-time, I think it's a full-time position, I mean, you know, Rob and my wife mentioned it could also possibly be a part-time, but I feel it's a full-time position, going outside of town, getting either existing businesses that want to expand, or startup companies that want to start fresh, and I think this is a big void that needs to be definitely spoken about, and so I'm asking to please put it back, or please put it in the 2012 budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Samaro, I live at 179 Scotland Road. I've been a resident here for eight years. Seven years ago, I was recruited to sit and help with Main Street, South Orange, in the Economic Development Committee. And once a month, we meet, and once a month, I sit there for three hours in a meeting, talking about how to recruit businesses into town, and as a volunteer, I saw firsthand of time that I had to spend, money I had to spend, and efforts I had to put in, in order to get businesses to move into South Orange, to talk to people, to pick up the phone and call businesses, to speak to people, to do surveys, a number of different initiatives that we put forth. The slogan is, "Take this town and love it," and I think it's changing to something new this year.
It's not been announced yet, it's still a-
Okay, whatever's going to be new, yeah, I don't even know what it is, but, you know, in the end, if we love the town, and you love the town, I implore you to reinstate the position that everyone's talked about all along tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Is that everybody who wishes to speak in tonight's budget hearing? If there's anybody else, please come up to the podium. Okay, we're not actually closing the hearing, we're just going to continue it until the 21st. I don't know if we, we don't necessarily need a motion for that, we can just continue our budget hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have our first of two public comment periods, where people can come up and comment now, at this point, about anything at all. So please do so, if you've already spoken, I'd ask you to please give people who haven't spoken yet a chance to do so. And the same three minutes applies, and I ask people to please respect that. If anybody would like to make a public comment this evening, some of these, I don't want to go through, some of these are for budget items, some are not, so if you'd like to make a public comment, just please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gagne, Executive Director of the Community Coalition on Race, South Orange, Maplewood, Community Coalition on Race. I didn't want to comment on the budget part, but I did want to thank the South Orange Village trustees for your consideration of our service proposal, for listening to our supporters speak on behalf of the work we do to build an integrated and inclusive community, and for taking into consideration the Coalition's value to South Orange. It's our sincere hope that we can continue to work with you as we try to make a difference in integration and race relations in our community. We hope you and the listening public will join us at our upcoming Conversations on Race. This is an annual event, it's one of our signature programs, it's an incredible program this year that will feature community leaders Barbara Heisler and Dr. Khalil Jabran Muhammad as presenters before we have our community roundtable discussions. This year's theme is Growing Through Our Discomfort. This forum provides the community with a chance to address the impact of what we say and do, of the words we use, when it comes to race relations and achieving the goal of integration. The forum is Wednesday, May 30th, 7:30 PM, at Temple Shari De Filo Israel in South Orange. To reserve a seat, people can visit our website, two towns dot org, or call our office. We hope that you will join us that night for this much-needed opportunity to reflect and share our thoughts as a community on how to improve communications and interactions across racial lines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Naomi Welk, 306 Hartford Road, South Orange, President of the Montrose Park Historic District Association, and I wanted to talk to you about the HPC. I briefly wanted to talk to you about the importance of Montrose Park, and the importance of preserving our homes and the character of our historic district. We who live in Montrose Park think we are homeowners, but that's not exactly true. Basically, we're simply interim caretakers or stewards of our historic homes, and we're responsible for preserving them for the future families who choose to live in Montrose Park. Many of us live in houses that have been homes to just one or two families. As many of you know, Montrose Park was developed in the mid-1800s, and annexed to the village of South Orange in 1891. Thomas Kingman, William Havemeyer, and other capitalists formed a syndicate to develop Montrose Park. The goal was to provide beautiful homes for wealthy men who had neither the time nor the inclination to attend to the details of building. Orange Lawn Tennis was originally located in Montrose Park at the corner of Montrose and Berkeley Avenues, they were there for 36 years until they moved to their present location. A lot of important people have lived in Montrose Park, William Frederick Allen, he's perfected and secured the adoption of Standard Time, he lived on Scotland Road, his house- His house no longer exists. Um, uh, Ohem Shalom is at that location right now. Jonathan Monnet, Secretary of Treasury, Goodyear Rubber Company, Scotland Road. His house no longer exists. Arthur Leach, investment banker at 321 Scotland, lived in a noted prairie, uh, school home designed by George Mayer. His house no longer exists. Edward Graves, banker at 425 Scotland. It's been said that this home had the largest ballroom of any private home in the state, and that's our pending issue. Uh, William and Anna Baird lived on Scotland Road, uh, 212, it's now 112 Raymond. Baird family's known for contributing land and funding the Meadowland Society. Walter Stifel lived on Scotland Road at the corner of Ralston. Um, he was a chemical manufacturer known for contributing to the military effort by making munitions. His house is still there. Clarence Riker, explorer, drug manufacturer and benefactor at 432 Scotland. Um, it's now home of Temple Sherry de Filo. Paul Sterrett lived on Berkeley Avenue. His firm, with his five brothers, built the Empire State Building. Louis Bamberg...
Thirty seconds.
How many? Thirty seconds? The beauty of our neighborhood, uh, was appealing to in early years, and today it remains an attractive neighborhood that entices people who are interested in living in historic homes to settle down in Montrose Park. More than 15 years ago, Montrose Park neighbors rallied together to create an organization to preserve and protect our homes, our gas lamps and bluestone sidewalks. By establishing an Historic Preservation Commission, we will be able to preserve for future generations our homes, community, and the quality of life we enjoy in Montrose Park.
Thank you.
Pardon? Give it to the clerk.
If you leave it... Do you want to just email it to us, Naomi?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Marlowe, 339 Academy Street. I just want to say thank you for single-stream recycling.
Can you speak up? Because I can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. It's not really tall enough for me, but I'll try. Um, thanks for single-stream recycling, but that's not here why I'm, why I'm here to talk to you. I'm here to talk to you as President of the South Orange Historical and Preservation Society about the Historic Preservation Ordinance that you are, will be introducing tonight. At least, I'm hoping you will. We believe that it is vital to pass this Historic Preservation Ordinance to protect our past for our future. The village should also adopt a Historic Preservation Plan element to the Village Master Plan, including the establishment of a Historic Preservation Commission with regulatory powers. We note that a Historic Preservation Ordinance would only apply to individually designated and districted historic properties. We acknowledge that this matter has been studied for 10 years and are thankful that it is finally being brought to the agenda. I would like to say better late than never, but let's not kid ourselves. The application of Mary Lawn of the Oranges to demolish the mansion at 425 Scotland Road still looms. We believe the reason for requesting demolition approval to facilitate sale, is to facilitate the sale of this property and the construction of a high, high-density multi-dwelling unit that would violate current zoning restrictions. We believe that Mary Lawn is seeking permission now because they know that if the Historic Preservation Ordinance is enacted, the application will be reviewed to determine whether it is appropriate to demolish the property from a historic perspective. Mary Lawn and its attorneys, no, that owners of private property listed in either the state or New Jer, uh, federal, his Register of Historic Places, does not limit their ability to demolish a mansion, as long as it follows local zoning codes. Additionally, the Uniform Construction Code provides a period of six months from following the operative date of subcode revision, which this would be, where an applicant may submit a complete permit application, including all prior approvals, to be reviewed in, uh, under the code in force immediately preceding the subcode revision. I'm sure this has not gone unnoticed. Passage of a Historic Preservation Ordinance and establishment of a Historic Preservation Commission may not save the mansion at 425 Scotland Road, but it could save other designated historic homes in our town and help preserve the historic...
Thirty seconds.
...character of the village. Practically, however, Mary Lawn is not the right space for high-density houses. Forget for a minute it's a historic district, just for a second. Uh, the property is not within walking distance of the village, at least for most people. It is not on the mid-town direct line, during not a single train that stops there in the morning going to New York. For, from a historic perspective, construction of a high-density MDU goes against the character of the neighborhood. We recommend against a high-density housing in this space. We stand beside Montrose Park and strongly oppose demolition of the mansion at 425 Scotland Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sabina Hack. I live at 112 Raymond Avenue. And if you were paying attention, you'll remember that that is the Baird house. We have Mr. Baird to thank for all of the parkland in the center of our town. Um, I'm here to urge you to create the Historic Preservation Commission. As I've been listening tonight, I mean, y'all have a hard job. There are a lot of good things you're trying to do, and a lot of them cost money. Establishing the Historic Preservation Commission doesn't cost you money, and it's a wonderful, great thing that you could do. Um, I live in Montrose Park. I live right next to a temple. So I kind of live in a place where there is a mixture of, um, housing types. That is less than ideal. And I think that, uh, it's important for you to really do what we can to save the historic nature of our neighborhoods. There are many reasons people move to our towns. One of them is the historic housing, and, um, you've heard about most of the others tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sharon Pigeon. I'm at 412 Vos. My house backs up to the house at 425 Scotland Road that Mary Land, Mary Lawn School is proposing to demolish. I'd like to reiterate the comments, um, that destroying that house would, um, devalue the neighborhood, the historic character of the neighborhood, and, um, just to make sure that the trustees and the rest of the community is aware that we intend to do whatever we can to try and stop that demolition. As part of that, I believe Mary Lawn wishes to demolish the house because they claim they cannot afford to keep the house. And yet, they have had their property advertised for sale only as a commercial property, uh, and it seems they have only looked to find a commercial developer willing, who, who might want to try and tackle getting that property rezoned. Um, I'd like to know from the trustees if the village has been engaged with Mary Lawn and any other potential solution, uh, or any potential use for that property, including trying to sell that residential...
We can, we're gonna speak about that later tonight.
Okay. Um, I would also like to know if the trustees have been engaged with any conversation with any of, uh, any other potential developers?
Nope.
Since the last one has backed down. Um, thank you, and, uh, I know there's more people who want to talk about the Historic Preservation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ed Moore. I live on 9 East Clark Place. Uh, I am also a member, or board member, of the West Montrose Neighborhood Association. And I'm here to, again, to reemphasize what is said by our colleagues across Scotland Road, just that...
Lean a little bit.
I'm, I'm here again to reemphasize the comments made by our, our partners across Scotland Road, that these issues are not just in, in the Montrose Park community, it's in the whole town. And the mansion at Mary Lawn is sort of the beginning of a slippery slope. We all know if that goes down, what's gonna be there next? The talk has been, uh, that high-density housing. The area is not a high-density housing area, it's single-family homes. And I think it would, it would have a negative impact on the community, and, uh, we're asking the board to consider every alternative to tearing down that home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Multhrop. I live at 367 Hartford Road. I'm here to speak about the HPC also. Um, I don't need to repeat all the comments that other speakers have said about it, but I do support those comments. I simply note that the ordinance before you is a good one. Uh, there is a very clear need for it, um, and that is certainly underscored by the situation we currently have at the Mary Lawn property. And so, I would urge you to enact that ordinance, uh, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tricia Gorman. I live at 377 Vos Avenue in South Orange, a block from Mary Lawn. And I am here to also, uh, support what Sharon Pigeon and some of the others were saying about the ordinance being put in place as soon as possible. Um, I live a block from the, the Mary Lawn Academy in a historic home as well. Um, one of the things that I wanted to pose to the board was, also, I would like to know what other kinds of developers who have historic preservationist expertise have been explored, if this must go to a developer. I think there are a lot of creative ways. There are many developers in the state of New Jersey, some of them, such as RPM, for example, who is currently working on the Opera House in Camden, some that have worked on Newark and Market Street, who have taken buildings and, you know, commercial areas that nobody even wanted to touch, and green-lighted it because they thought outside the box and preserved the history of the town. And I just want to speak a little bit just about the need for us as a community to look at these historic homes, not just as preserving our past, but for us to really rethink them as cultural, architectural, and economic assets of our town. I mean, one of the things in a very bad economy that this town has to offer is some of the cultural beauty that we have through these homes. It's one of the reasons why many of us have flocked here. Um, you know, with the economic situation in town and merchants suffering, I really think that we have to rethink this, that these homes are assets. They're not just, oh, well, somebody lived here. That's, of course, an important piece of the character of the town. But I really would urge you to really look at different types of developers, if it must go commercial, and also to consider residential options. Um, and that's all I will say for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I followed the rules because you said "last in," if I spoke already, so I let everybody else go before me.
Except those 10 people.
John Samaro, again, 179 Scotland Road. Um, I live in a historic Victorian. Uh, and I have a unique situation at my house. My house neighbors up to a development that happened back in the late 60s, or actually the early 60s, where there was the parents' house, I live in what was considered the daughter's house. The parents' house was a 9,000-square-foot mansion that sat on the corner of Raymond Avenue and Scotland Road, and the carriage house sat down on Vos Avenue. That entire property was raised back in the early 60s, and seven Cape Cod's now reside on that piece of property. So, I'm a very unique home, because I'm the only Victorian that still is sitting on the one block between Raymond and Ralston. Everything else is a contemporary home that's been there. It is, um, a devaluation to the value of my property. So, therefore, what's before you is a way to protect, to preserve, not only the history of the town, but also the value that the town brings. And I implore you to pass this resolution because, just take a picture of my house and what's sitting right next door to it, it just doesn't match. And the woman from 112 Raymond, she's got, she backs up against the synagogue, where in 1904, there's a photo of four grand Victorians. There's one thing that you need to keep in mind. If Scotland Road were left intact, the way it was back when it was originally built, we would rival Upper Mountain Avenue and Upper Montclair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time tonight? Um, and there's also just a reminder that after our action tonight and before our discussion, there'll be another public comment section.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. President? Since we have so many people here from the Montrose area, um, if there's any information about our, our legal parameters, or what powers or responsibilities we have as a board, if that could be shared, I think that that would be really informative, since they're here. Or, I, I, I could be sadistic and make them stay to the end of the meeting, since we have to be here all night, but I think it would be a really great thing to do.
We'll be, we'll be considering the ordinance, um, you know, not too, not too long from now, so, um, I think it'd be okay perhaps to ask people, I shouldn't, we don't have too much on the agenda before that.
Okay.
Okay, seeing as nobody else wishes to speak, I'd like to close public comments tonight, move on to approval of minutes from our April 23 regular meeting.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have a couple ordinances on second reading and public hearing tonight.
Thank you. We have, thank you. Is this on?
No, it has to be on.
We have ordinance 2012-06. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of South Orange Village, subsection 92-166F, to prevent, to permit vacant storefronts to be covered by alternate means.
Thank you. Um, this was an ordinance that basically allows, uh, instead of, uh, black paper over the front of storefronts, this allows people to work with the Design Committee of Main Street or, um, the equivalent committee of the Improvement District, um, to put something a little more unique about South Orange, a map, picture, something along those lines in the windows. So, uh, this is on second reading, um, so that means there's a public hearing for this ordinance in particular tonight. Uh, so if anybody wishes to comment on this ordinance, if you could please come forward to the podium. Okay, seeing as there are no people who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close public comments and open it up for board discussion.
I think that we've discussed this in...
Had a robust discussion.
Okay, there was a motion?
I second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Trustee Levinson.
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, ordinance 2012-06 was adopted.
Thank you.
We have a second ordinance, uh, for second reading and public hearing tonight. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of South Orange Village, Chapter 47, Sections 47-1, -3, -4, and -7, to bring the regulation of satellite antenna into compliance with federal law and to make other necessary amendments.
Thank you. Uh, this is basically a housekeeping item that brings our code, our village code, uh, up to compliance, um, with, uh, federal laws. Um, so if anybody would like to comment on this ordinance, uh, please come to the podium. I'd like to close public comments and open it up for board discussion. Seeing as there's no board discussion, is there a motion?
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, ordinance 2012-07 has been adopted.
And we have two ordinances on first reading tonight.
Thank you. We have ordinance 2012-08. This is an ordinance approving a draft, revised, and restated charter for the Township of South Orange Village and authorizing the submission of the same to the New Jersey Legislature for enacting into law.
Thank you. Um, this was discussed in our last meeting, and, uh, one of the things I remember that we did, uh, talk about was some language that I asked if the board was interested in considering, um, that would add a couple words into Municipal Powers and Responsibility Section, two different sections of the charter, uh, that would kind of formalize our, uh, both of our responsibility to advocate, um, although we were kind of stuck up on that word, for our residents, um, to other government entities. Um, we emailed the, uh, the Charter Review Committee was emailed, and they declined to formally be involved in it. A few people shared their opinions, although if I remember correctly, um, although there wasn't any general excitement for this, um, or some people didn't see a need for it, there wasn't any, uh, negative feedback. Um, so I don't know if people, I've, I've thought about it a little bit, and I hadn't come up with a better word than the word advocacy. So I don't know if people have had any other thoughts on it, or are interested in keeping this in, keeping one of the two sections in, or taking both out.
I'll reiterate what I said last time. The charter went through a thorough review by the Charter Review Committee for virtually a year, and I think to start tweaking language and powers at this last-minute utlaterally, I think is, um, unnecessary, and I think we should take the charter, as we all agreed to over many, many meetings, and, uh, send that down to trend as it currently is.
Um, and just to clarify, this doesn't add any power necessarily. I think this states things that we've already done and we already do. Um, and just for the benefit of the public, it was adding in a set...
unnecessary, and I think we should take the charter, as we all agreed to over many, many meetings, and send that down the trend as it currently is.
And just to clarify, this doesn't add any power necessarily. I think this states things that we've already done and we already do. And just for the benefit of the public, it was adding in a sentence to the subsection about municipal power that says that "The Board of Trustees shall function primarily as a legislative body devoted to policymaking and long-range planning, and the language and advocacy for the welfare of its residents." And under the duties and, powers and duties of the village president was to add the language after "recommend to the Board of Trustees whatever actions or programs he or she deems necessary" to add, add language that is recommended to the Board of Trustees and to external governments and other entities. Just to refresh people's memory. So that one, I think, is, is easy. I mean, obviously, I know from firsthand, part of my responsibility is to go to the county and to the state legislature and our congresspeople and try and advocate for our government. And this, although it's certainly not prohibited, it's not really expressed in here to make that a responsibility. See no reason why. Shouldn't be.
I agree with Trustee Goldberg. We had a group working for a very, very, very long time on the charter, and I think I would like to just stick with the recommendations that they made.
I won't belabor this, but we've made quite a few changes since the committee recommended it. So.
I, I don't know that it adds anything.
I don't think it hurts, but I'll move in, in second, and we can just vote.
I think some of these things could be done, you know, some of the changes of the advocacy especially, can be done by resolution on anything we want to advocate for. I'm okay with leaving it the way it was.
Okay.
My second.
You second? Okay.
So people, there's no more discussion. I don't know if there's discussion about, from the board, about any other pieces of this? No, we have discussed it quite a bit. If not, is there a motion to move this on first reading?
We have a move there in second.
I do have a motion in a second. I'll take a third.
Do we have a roll call?
Thank you. So this is a motion to introduce ordinance 2012-08. Trustee Bauer?
Now, with respect to the Charter Commission, but I have to vote no.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2012-08 has passed on introduction by the board.
Barry, can I re-
I imagine we'll do that after our specific ordinance also?
No, you have to set the public hearing date for this one.
Okay.
Well, we have another, another first.
Yeah, we both of them. Barry, can I just request that we put a copy, obviously, the ordinance itself will go on the website, but can we also put the revised and restated charter on the website as, as well? Thank you.
We have a second ordinance for introduction tonight, ordinance 2012-09. This is an ordinance establishing a Historic Preservation Commission.
I'd like to open this ordinance up for board discussion.
I'll begin. I think that we're in support of many of the people who came. I'm in support of many of the people who've come up here regarding preserving the character of South Orange. I just love the historic homes and the diversity in storage homes. Outside of Montrose, each section has its own character. As a matter of fact, when we were looking to decide what we were going to do to the Village Hall, which is in such disrepair, and some of the options were, do we sell the building? Do we, you know, have someone come and lease it, whatever? And I was adamantly against anything but keeping the historic exterior of this building. The interior will be changed. Thank goodness that, you know, the, the rules don't apply to the interior, but it is the icon, you know, it's our branding, the Village Hall, and I feel the same about our, the housing stock of our community. So, but I also want clarification about what, what we can and can't do, what powers we have or don't have as legislators on behalf of our town with regards to what's going to happen at Mary Lawn. And I'm learning with you the limitations that we as trustees have. But I, in very simple terms, and I'll end it quickly now, I'm with you.
With respect to this, Janine, I was actually, if you don't mind, I was going to put you a little bit on the spot, since I think you're closest to this, and you know it.
No problem.
Better than any of us. I, I, you know, I agree with what Deborah said. I also support this, and I've been on the Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Committee that's been looking at this, along with Trustee Rosner, Trustee Gould, and yourself. But Janine, I mean, credit to you, you've sort of been spearheading this for some time, and I think you know this intimately, you know? And maybe you could, for the people in the room, as well as anyone who's watching, sort of recap what this is, what the ordinance provides, what it, what benefits it brings, and sort of the structure of it?
Sure. There was a, a study that was done by the village a few years ago that looked at, among other things, the establishment of an Historic Preservation Commission. And really, I've been building, along with Trustee Rosner and our Historic Preservation colleagues out in the audience, the consensus to pass an Historic Preservation Commission, which is a strong commission. These terms are a little bit unfortunate, but under the Municipal Land Use Law, because this is considered a zoning ordinance, under the Municipal Land Use Law, which governs zoning in New Jersey, you have the option of creating a weak commission or a strong commission. This is a strong commission form, however, it has very limited powers, because the question that we really wrestled with was, we didn't want to regulate or overregulate, because we heard a lot of stories about, you know, how that can be bad. I've lived in a strong commission overregulated community, so I'm very familiar with it myself. And Montrose in particular, although we have other areas of the town that could actually be historic districts and have enough integrity and remaining features that they could be historic districts. But Montrose in particular has been so successful, even as an unregulated community, as it were. So the bottom line is, this is a strong commission, however, it, it regulates demolitions and subdivisions, which would do violence to the, what are referred to under the Municipal Land Use Law as the bulk standards, which basically means side yards and setbacks and front yards and backyards and so forth. So those are the two categories that it regulates. It does not regulate anything else. It doesn't regulate what you do with your roof or your window, or how you add on. You're allowed to do things like that. Of course, we, you know, hope that the standards that have prevailed will continue to prevail, which so many of the speakers eloquently spoke about. But the bottom line is, otherwise, it pretty much follows the pattern of Maple Woods Historic Preservation Commission ordinance, and that was after a number of us reviewed several ordinances of mostly nearby towns to compare and contrast.
Okay, just have a couple things. One of the things also about the Historic Commission is that we also do ask them to advise on issues that they don't regulate on.
That's right.
So if, if we're doing additions, we would hope that they would, would give
A report.
Advisory on that to, to any homeowner or to the Planning Board, the Board of Adjustment, if there was any plans being put forth. And just for a quick history, Amy Dawn, I think is back here somewhere, hiding in the back. We started on this 400 years ago. And actually passed aver- we actually put forth an ordinance, put 10 years ago, which was defeated 42. And then revised it under, when Doug Newman was Village President, which we didn't get any works. I think we came to a stalemate. So this is the first time I actually think we have a board that's mostly in favor of the ordinance. So it's been a long time coming. It's been 10, 11 years since we took-
But Hoots County.
Yeah.
Is this a good time for me to ask?
Can I finish my comments as well?
Oh, I didn't know you were starting. I'm sorry.
I'll go quick. I'm the only resident on, Montrose Park resident actually on the board here, and I was initially really concerned about overregulation. I was concerned about doors and windows and roofs and et cetera, et cetera. And I was very concerned about the Historic Commission. But I'd like to thank Trustee Bauer. She's done a wonderful job. I'm very comfortable with the commission as it stands now, and I will be voting yes on it.
Yeah, I just, I'm a complete supporter of the, the commission, but I had a couple questions that was a part of the ordinance. It's, it states that we have a historic preservation element in the master plan. Is that correct? And if it is, when was the last time it was updated?
I'm glad you brought that up. The first item of business after the Historic Preservation Commission is created, which is the first item of business after the ordinance is passed finally and published and becomes effective, is to undertake a study to create an historic element of the master plan. So there are steps that have to be done, and I recognize some of you. I think it was Karen Marlowe who said, "Better late than never," except for Mary Lawn. We understand this situation very well, just as you do. And, and I think in response to Sabine, too, it will cost a little bit of money, not a lot of money, but we definitely will have to retain a planner with expertise in historic preservation to advise us on that. But looking forward to that, and I think as a, as a minimum, we could probably go forward while we study the rest of it and say, anything that's on the state or national register, which can be immediately adopted, and I anticipate, hopefully, my colleagues will support that. Introducing that as a resolution or ordinance, however, has to be really just a resolution, because it just goes to the master plan.
Some of that work was already done by the village planner. When we originally thought we were passing it, they started on it, and then we pulled back. So the planner should have, assuming we use the same planner, which may, may not be the case.
A tremendous amount of the work that needs to be done was done in the report pursuant to the study.
So we should queue that up as part of our planning process?
We could actually do it on a parallel.
Precisely.
If this passes tonight, you could bring it up to the Planning Board at the next meeting.
Yeah.
On a parallel path.
And my understanding from the administrator is that money's been set aside to accommodate that, and it's not very much, so.
And there's another paragraph that makes reference to a capital improvements program. Do we have one?
The, I believe that we are not a village that sends the capital improvement to the Planning Board. So I think that would only-
It says advise the Planning Board on inclusion of historic sites in the recommended capital improvement program.
Oh, that just means like, you know, Baird needs improvements, you should set aside some money. That's just a report and advice kind of thing.
I have a, a comment and a question. One, the comment is, I think this is a great thing to do. I grew up in, in a house in Montrose that was built in 1893, which makes me feel even younger. And, and it's really a great, it's a great house, and last year, going door to door in South Orange, got to see even more houses, especially in the Montrose neighborhood. And it's, it's pretty incredible. Some friends and people who helped out walking around town were astounded at the quality of houses in this town. So this is definitely a great way to help preserve that. And I do have a process question. I know this at some point needs to be reviewed by the Planning Board. Is that correct?
It has been sent to the Planning Board. I already sent it there.
Okay.
Last, I guess, last week.
Monday was the planning board.
Okay, so we can pass it on first, on first reading tonight, and in, and before this, in the second reading, they can come back with the comments and-
They have to come back.
They have to come, okay. And if there are significant changes, then we go back to first reading, and if not, continue forward?
Okay. I have, I have a question I, I want to ask that I'm sure a lot of people will want to know, and I want to know, regarding the Mary Lawn situation. I don't know if this is a good time to have it, or can we have the discussion, if it's not appropriate to have it immediately after the vote. But my question is, what powers do we have as legislators in regards to what happens with that mansion on the Mary, that Mary Lawn is trying to demolish or sell or?
There, there are powers that you have pursuant to the Uniform Commercial, Uniform Construction Code that relate to demolitions. They aren't devoid of any reference to the historic nature of the property that's proposed to be destroyed. That's why you're adopting this ordinance, so that you have some control over historic structure. But currently, but currently, the, the laws in place that deal with demolitions do not give you a hook, if you will, based on the historic nature of the property.
Just to, you know, in terms of the zoning of a high, high-density, multi-complex or subdivision or anything like that, if it's, if they want to go for a high density, they have to go to the Board of Adjustment with plans. A developer would have to go forth with plans, architectural plans, an engineer, and a traffic study as well, to the Board of Adjustment, and if it was to do a subdivision, to do multiple single-family homes, they would then go to the Planning Board. But it would not come to this board under any of those circumstances, and they're not eligible.
They have to go for a subdivision in any event, because it's, it's one parcel.
It's actually-
Isn't it?
No, there's actually three parcels there now. Two, two that the convent sits on, and one that the school sits on.
There's three tax lots.
Are we having the Mary Lawn discussion now, or are we going to do this?
Yeah, I'd rather not.
What are we doing? Because I have some other comments, I have some other comments on it.
I'd rather not, but I think that was a good clarification. I'm glad you made that clarification, and I, I'd rather just vote on the ordinance.
I'll move the ordinance.
Can we agree to discuss Mary Lawn at our-
As soon as we vote on it.
Yeah. That's the question I asked. Okay, yeah.
I'll move the ordinance.
I second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, okay.
If I could just put on the record that ordinance 2012-08 has passed upon introduction by the board.
Thank you. If we want to have a, a brief discussion about the point that Trustee Davis Ford-
Do you want to put down the-
Yeah, I'll set it down.
Set it down?
Yes, yeah, let's do both of those.
Trustee Davis Ford, I, yeah, I-
Did you give me?
I do not have that document for you, but-
Oh, I should know it by heart.
Make it up as you go along.
It would be presented at the June 13 meeting.
I'm, I'm-
June 11.
June 11, I'm sorry.
I move that this ordinance be- Pardon me?
Both ordinances.
Okay. Gosh, I have to read the ordinance number. Now, you're making too much work. I move that ordinance number 2012-08 and 2012-09 be brought forth for a second reading on June-
11.
11.
And public hearing.
And, and public hearing.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, in consideration of the number of guests that we have tonight, allow just a brief discussion on the issues that were just raised and some clarification points. I know, I think we've all received a number of emails about it also, so it's certainly good to be able to talk a little bit about tonight. And maybe the two, maybe the way we want to break it up a little bit, just so that it's the easiest to understand, is there are kind of two different pieces of this? One being the demolition permit for the building, which I know people have had a lot of questions about, and the other being any potential redevelopment of that lot.
Can Steve start?
Sure. The the application that was attempted to be filed to demolish this property was not actually filed. It has been returned to the, to the property owner because additional information was necessary. It appears that soil removal or-
Disturbance?
Disturbance. It's disturbance, excuse me, I was looking for that word. Soil disturbance permit was required. A, a major permit is going to be required, and it looks like, based on that, the matter will have to be referred to the Planning Board. That is one of the steps that has to be taken in advance of the issuance of the permit, together with a host of other issues. Power disconnection, water sewer disconnection, all of those good things have to be taken care of before, in fact, the permit can be issued. Those steps presumably are being taken now by the property owner.
So that leads me to my next question. So with the pa- how does that affect- So that leads me to my next question. So with the, how does that affect their ability to move forward, since you sent it back and they don't have the permit? Does the law allow them?
It's just timing. It's the thing, when they get everything, this is all a matter of time.
They've got to take all the steps necessary in order to get the permit.
And they've actually been following our meetings. They'll probably be listening tonight, but they've been following our meetings. And when they knew that we were passing this ordinance, it actually triggered them to take the step. If we voted on this three years ago, they would have taken the step then.
All right. Maybe I'm just making my question too complicated. Basically, if, do they have a limited amount of time to be successful with the demolition if that process is not completed by the time this passes on second reading?
No, no, there's one thing I...
No, that's why I said the Historic Preservation Commission has to be created, which means members have to be named. And, and then the study has to be done, and the master plan has to be amended to include an historic element. So there are a number of steps that have to be taken by the village or the village entities in order to have the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance become fully effective.
I see.
Even after passage.
The question of preventing demolition is more finding an alternate use or to get Mary Lawn or the sisters.
Speak up a little bit, I can't bear it.
The question now is, to prevent demolition is to find an alternate use or buyer for the property at a price that they will accept. So if you found somebody who wanted to renovate an historic house or a house that they may designate as historic, and find an alternate buyer for that house and get them to accept that price, the property is appraised at one point something million, and they're looking for three million, and which is what they claim they need to save the school, which may or may not be true. But the question is, that property is zoned for single-family right now, and if they can only build single-family there now, and so the price, they're either going to have to come down on their price greatly, whether they demolish it or not. So our issue is, how do you find someone to buy that house if you want to, if you want to keep the house from being demolished? How do you find someone to buy that house? And you have to do it in concert with the Sisters of Charity to get them to agree to a price and to market the house to a single-family homeowner, to a single-family homeowner versus marketing to a multi-unit developer, which is what they've been doing. So if you keep marketing to developers, that's the only people who are going to come. But if they drop the price to the appraised value of the property, they might actually find somebody who'd be willing to pay a reasonable price. And they could try raising the money to do some other property sale, because they own a lot of property in this state.
So I think in response to your basic question, Deborah, about what are our powers, I think it's less about power or jurisdiction than it is about brains and our negotiating ability, in concert with the court of public opinion, which is out in force.
Right. And so, yeah, I agree with that. And largely also a policy decision. This is, for the record, this is the first time we have discussed this issue, period. We've discussed the Historic Preservation Commission, but we have not discussed this at all. And so I thank everyone for sending us the emails over the past few days and coming out to the meeting. So it's bringing this to light. But we, as a board, need to discuss what is our policy decision going to be. You know, I remember eight, nine years ago, sitting, or 10 years ago at this point, sitting in those exact chairs when the quarry was proposed to be developed and being told by the village, oh, sorry, there's nothing we can do. Turned out that wasn't exactly true. And I know, you know, that's not what people want to hear. They want to know, what are we going to do to represent them? So we have to discuss, what is our position going to be? You know, open space money, or what, or are we going to, Janine, to your point, to negotiate, to help these people negotiate. There's a variety of things that we can do outside of the legal parameters that Steve is outlining. And I think we discussed in the policy, I'd requested that to be put on the agenda for closed session this evening, but that was removed from the agenda. So when we talk about the closed session agenda, I would like to reiterate that that be put on the agenda, so we, as a board, can talk about what is our position on this.
Because the Mary Lawn issue, I think I was just made aware of it. The building being sold maybe a couple of weeks ago, so that was the first time that I was aware of that. This has been a long time coming, this ordinance. We've been talking about it. And so we had expected to present this and, and vote on it anyway. So, but the Mary Lawn situation is relatively new to me.
I'd like to suggest that we set up a committee, a couple of trustees, and maybe a couple of members of the public that are interested, to try to work with Mary Lawn to vet some possible options for the site. We need to have a board discussion before that, but I had some ideas to throw out. I know that the rec department and the BOE is dying for rec space, just dying for it. We have freshman soccer played on, you know, flood zone with rocks in it right now over at Chiswick's. And, you know, we really need to get some more rec facilities. Maybe there's a way for the board to vet in South Orange to buy some of the open space and somehow get them enough money to preserve the building. I don't know, but that's a possibility. Also, Seton Hall has talked a lot about having housing for professors. Maybe there's a way they can come in, preserve the convent, put housing in that, maybe build some other housing on the rest of the site. Certainly not 80 units, but something maybe similar to what the Village Green has done up on South Orange Avenue. I'm just throwing ideas out there. I don't know what they are, and I don't know if they're feasible, but certainly if we brainstorm on that and work with Mary Lawn, perhaps there's an opportunity to get something palatable to both the public and to the board.
I just want to say, you know, we keep saying Mary Lawn, but it's probably the Sisters of Charity that we do have to go. And I agree that we should put together a group, and it can be, you know, residents from that area, interested parties, a couple of trustees, whoever we think we should do, and try and come to a solution before they... But we do have to move fast.
Correct.
Relatively fast.
Well, I would suggest...
But in the, you know, and I wouldn't want to throw any ideas out there.
I think it's a good idea, and I would suggest trustee Bauer and Gould would be the, the best trustees to be on that.
Not while you're yourself?
I got a lot of other hot issues.
I do have a question for Janine.
Along with residents from, you know, the Montrose.
Wasn't that property part of their open space inventory? And what, if it is, what does that effect have on it?
It's not part of the open space inventory, what's called the RSE that's on file with DEP, which includes both active and passive park and open space. It is set aside and targeted in the recreation element of the master plan, four-point-something acres, I forgot, which are the tax lots I just referenced before, to add to our recreation inventory. So if we wanted to move ahead with some action with respect to that, the groundwork was laid by the recreation update in the master plan in December 2004.
Might I suggest my, I think a group of people getting together to discuss this is a great idea. My only worry would be, the committee sounds like it's kind of more long-term, whereas this is, you know, a very immediate need. I don't know if it's worth establishing a committee. Maybe it is, or maybe it's worth having a meeting here in Village Hall where residents can come out and people can basically throw ideas out and, and we can try and, as a village, facilitate a discussion about, you know, what ideas people have. Are there any creative solutions?
You know what? I think a committee is better, and I'll tell you why. It has to be manageable and be able to come up with certain actions and steps, a strategy. When you have a large group, we know how everybody feels. We've heard that information. So, you know, that will not allow us to take action and have a deliverable. But with a working group representing the board of trustees and several people from the Montrose organization, with, I think that we can, they can, they can come together, talk about the issues which they know, and then come, come up with a suggestion or policy and bring it to the board for the board as a whole to discuss. And then as a result of that process, then we can establish a policy that can be implemented. I think that's workable. If you do this again, nothing will happen.
Sure, no, and I didn't mean a board meeting. I meant, you know, more of a work where people can discuss these issues.
Well, that can be a component.
Where it's not necessarily, you know, on a dais like this.
Mr. President, that could be a component of it. The committee may decide as part of this process of developing the policy, that they may want to hold one or two sessions, you know, open sessions for feedback from the people. But in order for something constructive to be done with a strategic plan and tactics that could be implemented as part of a policy, you need a small working group.
I, I guess I would just caution about the, the timing of that. I mean, that just sounds very long-term. I, I understand.
No, it's certainly going to be done immediately.
I understand that's not what you're proposing, but this is all happening very quickly. And I also just want to be careful not to, you know, be the, I guess, the buzzkill at all. But there's very, very small of a formal role of the board of trustees. As a policy, the board can decide if they have a stance on this issue or not. But as Village Council mentioned, this issue isn't coming before the board for some sort of approval or not approval.
No, but we...
So I just want to make sure to clarify that people aren't expecting the board of trustees to pass a resolution saying, build this here, we can't do that.
As you try to put in the charter, we can advocate.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, and it's, it's good to make that...
Although we didn't put that in charter.
It's true to make it clear that we can't do anything legally, but we can form a policy, that we can be proactive, so that we know now there's certain areas where this has the potential, that we can have a policy that we can, you know, be in front of anything.
I don't think it's so much a matter of being proactive or reactive. I think it's just that at this point, we could act as, help act as an intermediary.
Right, as a facilitator.
So that we can help put this, you know, and maybe come up with a solution. It may not work, because the money may not be there, or it may not be, there may not be a meeting in the minds. They may not accept anything. But, but it's worth, it's worth the effort.
And to come up with some, some ideas that, basically, right now, they're in dire financial situation, and they're looking, they have a specific dollar amount that they need to survive. So if, if, I believe if we are able to come up with a solution that meets that dollar amount to help them, it's that simple. They, they've determined that they need $3 million.
Okay. So some what?
I think there were two questions that were raised about Mary Lawn before. Did you say you were going to leap out?
Yeah, what were they?
No, the, the, we, a developer...
The question, yeah, the question was, what have we been engaged in as a board so far?
Basically, we weren't engaged. Developer, developer did reach out, actually more than one developer did reach out. Two of us did set up a meeting with members of the Montrose Park Historic Association, the Sisters of Charity, and three members of the board met with them just to hear what they had to say. We didn't, we didn't encourage them, we didn't discourage them, we just listened to what they had to say and, and told them what some parts of the process were. But that's as far as that, as that went. And I think at the end, we just said, you know, if you want, if they want to go forth with a, with a, if a developer, if that developer wanted to go forth to the Board of Adjustment, that was his decision. But there would not be a support from the Montrose Park Association or from the board of trustees in supporting the plan as presented. There hasn't been any other I know about.
She's got to come to the mic.
The, in those meetings, the question was what potential solutions were discussed. And in those meetings, I think everything was kind of thrown on the table, just like we did right now. And I think that's certainly a worthy thing to do, because you never know when someone, you know, might come and sit down and say, hey, has anyone thought of this? And, you know, it might actually be the one that works. But that was, that was really as, as far as it went, as trustee Rosner said. And it ended with the developer talking with the Montrose Park Historic District about...
I think we were pretty clear that they said, we, I think we were pretty clear to the developer that the Montrose Park Association was not going to be in favor of this, and they should, if they wanted to go further, they should try and meet with them and work towards a solution, if they can come to one, to both the Sisters of Charity and the developer.
We can't really take questions. Only reason why I allowed that is because I didn't take a note down of the two questions, and I wanted to make sure that we did answer them. There will be actually one more public comments section after our consent agendas tonight. But if people are okay with it, if we could move on to that. Someone's going to bring a resolution, work on a resolution for the next meeting about this, to establish the committee.
Establish the committee. I'd like to be on the committee, too.
Okay. Okay, so we have next our consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a resolution affirming the township of South Orange Village's civil rights policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, prospective employees, volunteers, independent contractors, and members of the public that come into contact with municipal employees, officials, and volunteers. We have a resolution designating Jonathan Rose Companies as the conditional redeceiver for the Valley and Third Street redevelopment area and authorizing the village president to execute a conditional redevelopers agreement. A resolution authorizing applicant Main Street South Orange to organize and conduct a sidewalk sale for South Orange retail merchants on Saturday, May 19. A resolution authorizing the purchasing agent and village clerk to sell or dispose of the following, of vehicles no longer needed for public use. A resolution authorizing the village president to submit an application to the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for a drive-sober grant. A resolution authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute a service agreement with the Maplewood-South Orange Community Coalition Race in the amount not to exceed $18,000. A resolution authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute a service agreement with YouthNet in the amount not to exceed $12,000. A resolution authorizing the purchase of radio equipment through state contract T-0109 to Mobile Tektonics Incorporated, vendor contract number A-53824, in the amount of $39,880. And a resolution authorizing an executive session at tonight's meeting of the board of trustees.
The contract matters for our executive session are PBA collective bargaining and OPEIU collective bargaining, personnel matters, appointments to the special improvement district board, and litigation matter, Saic Valley Sewage Commission litigation.
And I also want to add Mary Lawn to that as a legal item.
Which exception?
Legal. It's a legal issue, potential litigation.
Potential litigation, okay.
Can I, I'd like to pull three resolutions out.
Can we finish with the executive?
Oh, sorry.
And I'm sorry, and Mark, didn't you have the code enforcement?
Yeah, the personnel issues is code enforcement on you.
Thank you. What was that, Steve? No, I think that, that should be on there, too, right?
Yeah, that's...
Well, that's not closed session. It's actually open session.
It opens, yeah. Then I send through the resolution.
He starts with a joint meeting?
Oh, yeah, no.
Joint, joint, the joint, the sacred river.
Joint meeting?
Yeah, the sacred river, I'm sorry, sacred river.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
That's for the consent agenda, though, not, not for the executive session?
No, it's not on the agenda.
I'm saying that's for the consent agenda, not for the executive session agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I don't know if we're done with the, okay, just hold on for one sec, just because I don't think we're done with the executive session. Did you have?
No, no, no.
Okay. Do you have a copy of that resolution?
I, I ordered it to...
I don't believe I was able to get through all my emails today. I might not have actually read it or reviewed it.
Okay.
We're going to send it to you right now, so you could read the...
I'm not, I don't, I'm not on the...
Can I wait till Monday, Steve?
Okay, well, we'll read it here.
Yeah, please.
Steve, can I wait till Monday? Can I wait till Monday? We have a meeting next Monday.
No, it's, it's emergent.
It, it is really... Resolution authorizing execution of a letter to state senators and assemblymen in the action entitled NJDEP v.
Microphone.
Microphone. You have to read it, start on...
Resolution authorizing execution of letter to state senators and assemblymen in the action entitled NJDEP v. Occidental Chemical Corporation et al. And so that everyone understands what this is about. This is, this is an attempt to get a legislative fix for a very, very extensive environmental lawsuit wherein most of the northeastern New Jersey municipalities have been brought in as third-party defendants. And these municipalities face a huge defense cost, many millions and millions of dollars in defense and potentially damages that might have to be paid for environmental issues related to sewage into the Passaic River and Nord Bay. And it's, it's critical that action be taken as quickly as possible, and that's what this resolution tries to do, legislative action to curtail our involvement in that, in that lawsuit.
We have one other action that may come out of the closed session after we discuss the joint meeting, because I have to vote on a resolution at the joint meeting which authorizes funds for the attorneys who support the joint meeting. And you need to understand that there's a $6 million potential...
Six and a half million dollars, just for the first phase of the litigation.
Which, which is $200,000. Which, which is $200,000 to us.
So we should reset, recess, not adjourn before we move on?
Correct, correct.
Now, this is, this is critical that action be taken as quickly as possible.
Trustee Levinson, does that action also need to be taken tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the vote is on Thursday.
Well, I, I, I think that that can be taken informally, actually. I think, and I think actually, because that involves contract negotiation, that should be in, in executive session.
Yeah, I had asked if it was open or closed, yeah.
Okay. Were we able to get a printout of that?
Of consent.
Okay. If we make sure, just to get an extra copy or two, if anyone from the public wants to. While that's happening, do people have other questions about the consent agenda?
I want to pull out 097, 101, and 102.
And I would like to have 96 and 103.
Pull that separately or discuss, ever?
Discuss.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we go through and discuss things?
And if we're going to pull out 101, I want 102 pulled out.
I think, I think-
Yeah, pulled it.
I'm sorry, Trustee Goldberg, it was 101, 102.
And 97, I'd like to discuss 97. I don't know if I want it pulled out, but I want to-
Okay, so why don't, why don't we go through and discuss everything, and then if you still want to take that, you can do that.
Okay, okay. 96-
Trustee Levinson, you had a question?
Yeah, I just don't understand who put this on and what it is.
Which one are you talking about?
96.
Okay.
That came from our administrator, who is-
Disappeared.
He's in the Xerox room.
Uh-
97, I need him for 97 too, so.
Okay. Mr. Rother, do you know, are you able to speak to 96 at all? I don't know if you've discussed that.
I can guess what that is, but I don't know for sure. I, I, that sounds like a GIF requirement to me.
That is what it is, yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
And it's pretty, pretty apparent from the title, but the details of it, I can't tell.
97 was a conditional developers agreement to allow the redevelopment attorney to start discussions with the potential developer, negotiations.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Here, here's my question. We've not yet, as a board, discussed the Jonathan Rose Companies. And my understanding Jonathan Rose, and I could be completely off base, is they're primarily a planning firm, and they also work as owner's rep. And I'm wondering if anyone vetted them out to see if they've done base building construction, particularly apartments. I see they've done not-for-profit work. I went to their website today, and most everything I went through, I admit, I did not go through every project, but when I was going through the one-on-one, it was something called civic development, which is, if you read closely, that's owner's rep. That's not base building construction. So I just want to make sure that they've been fully vetted and that they have done apartment buildings before, not just renovation work or owner's rep work.
They've absolutely done apartment buildings before, and they were vetted, and one of the members of the Development Committee actually did work for them at one time, and gave you some history, but they, but they've done, I don't know, I don't know if they, I don't know if they have more than one website, you know, if they have one for the, for the public or not, but they, they were definitely fully vetted.
Did, has anyone checked references on them, different towns they might have worked in?
Yes.
Yeah, they're a pretty large, I think this is, this is actually a fairly small apartment project. Trustee Rosner, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is they've done, and some of it was in their proposal, there are other projects they've worked on, and they were, some of them were, you know, much, much larger than this.
And we look upon this as a public-private partnership, which they've also absolutely done, but-
Mark, did the Development Committee meet with them, or you just reviewed their proposal?
No, no, we met with them.
Oh, you did?
We met with them, yeah. We met with both developers that put in the final bids. We met with Elcor.
Could, could you speak to which towns they've worked in and what the experience has been?
You know, we, we have, we have it in email format. Can you, can you send all the board members, or other than me, the proposals from Jonathan Rose and Elcor, so that they can see it?
They have monstrous binders.
There is, well, he may have more binders, I don't know if there's more binders or not.
Yeah, but we PDF them, some of them are broken into sections, but we can get them to hand.
I, I would feel a bit more comfortable holding this off till the next meeting, just so I have time to look at that. Because this, we've not discussed this as a full board before, and it's a huge development, and I'm a little gun-shy, as you can imagine, from other developments that we might or might not had a pat in town.
I don't know what that means, but I'm-
Like, one of the holes in the ground that's remained for a number of years, I'm just really want to make sure they're vetted out before we-
That's a different kind of story.
I understand that, but I want to make sure it's-
That was a property owner, that was not a developer.
I know, but I want to, I want to make sure that they're fully vetted, and I would feel much more comfortable with one more week to read through the materials.
That's fine, I mean, I don't know if, when the redevelopment was planned, I don't know when, when the redevelopment attorney was planning to meet with them, but he can't do anything until we pass this, that's, you know, that's the only-
Would anyone else feel more comfortable holding this till next week and doing it next week's meeting?
I'm telling you, you can wait till next week, but I just, I'd rather do it next week than in two weeks.
It'll be two, two weeks. We'll probably not add that for the reorganization meeting.
But then it's two and a half weeks.
Am I the only one who's, uh-
I'm okay with that. And Nancy, if that makes you feel more comfortable?
I would feel much, if we waited this, I'd be much more comfortable with a week or two more.
Okay.
I don't think, it's two and a half weeks, you know, those.
So we'll take that one out and make sure that we get those materials distributed to everybody in the meantime.
Thank you.
But I, but I would, I would feel, I would feel more comfortable than just, than just you reading it, that you might want to reach out to the redevelopment attorney and talk to them.
I would love to do that, that would be great.
I think that would make more sense.
That would make, that would probably be the easiest way to vet that, he'll, he'll know. Okay.
Because I don't think you're going to get what you want from looking at that.
Okay, what was the next one that someone had a question about?
96, which we skipped, right?
Are we, are we okay with 96 back in here?
No, no, it's, we're waiting for Barry to come back.
Oh, no, that's what it was, it was, it was a GIF requirement.
Oh, that's from the Joint Insurance Fund, it's mandatory language that every town-
So this was housekeeping?
Yeah.
Tough question.
Yeah.
So was the next question on 101?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to vote on that separately, if we could.
Sure.
I'd like to make some comments to 101.
I'd like to do that as well.
Do we want to take 101 and 102 out and have those each as separate resolutions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can do that.
Howard, do you want, you had a question on 103 as well, right?
Correct.
As I did, do you want to go ahead first?
Right. On 101?
Wait.
No, no, we're not doing that.
Yeah, let's do those after the consent agenda, the rest of it. Are there other questions on the consent agenda?
Well, I had, I had questions about 103. Well, in, in general, where we have funds associated to it, we still don't have certification of the funds, and I would assume if we do pass these resolutions, that certification would be made tomorrow.
I was under the impression 103 is paid for by a grant, and this is just a word of the contract based on our email exchange we had over the weekend?
Right, well, it's under the OEM Emergency Management Center grant, it's a FEMA grant, there's a matching fund, but our match was budgeted last year, so that there should be no question about the fund availability.
I think, but I think, I think to Trustee Levinson's point, we should have the certification done on everyone, whether it is, whether it's grant or not.
I had a number of questions about it because it's the first time I'm, I'm actually seeing Is this purchase covered by a contract? Are we having a formal contract, or is it just the purchase order, which doesn't have any contract to it?
It's covered by the state contract, it's under a state contract, it spells out all the terms.
All right. Are there any additional fees associated to the purchase of that, of the consoles? Do we have maintenance charges? Do we have, who's going to do the installation?
That's the installed price, and I, my understanding, I think the first year is under warranty, then after that, you likely have a maintenance contract.
Do we know how much that's going to be?
I'd have to check.
And I, I think the purchase order did not have, it was being, it's installed, but it, that was... And is there a plan for, you know, having this installed in, in an overlapped way? We, you know, the current consoles versus?
Yeah, the intention would be not have any downtime.
Right.
Yes.
And is this something that would have been part of the best practices review, the consulting?
Well, it's, I think we, we have to have a dispatch console, and the one we have has gone out twice in the last six weeks, it's just old, it's dated.
They can't hear you.
No, I'd said it's, the existing console's very old and has gone out and had to have emergency repairs twice, I think, and just since I've been here. So I, I don't know that this would be, I mean, I wouldn't envision this being particularly impacted by the ICMA study.
Yeah, and the other question that I have is, is that, is this something that, you know, in reading what it was about, does this now bring together the fire department, police department, EMS, as a common console?
No, I mean, this is just a piece of hardware, it wouldn't, I mean, the fire department, police department already dispatched, and their EMS is not technologically, I don't-
Well, that's the way it reads.
Yeah, what do you mean, that's the way it reads?
I don't think this is changing any functionality, I could be wrong, but I wasn't aware that this was changing our use of the equipment necessarily. If you're asking if it's-
It's basically replacing what's there.
It was a whole new console, and there were, there are questions that I have about narrowbending as well, and if this can accommodate narrowbending, which has a mandate of January 13.
That I would have to ask the chief.
Are you suggesting, do you want to take this out until we get those questions answered, or are you comfortable passing this tonight while those are?
Well, I, I didn't know that we had a console that was failing.
I'd rather vote on it and give the answers to the questions, and if you feel there's a problem, then, then don't go through with the purchase.
I agree.
Yeah. I'll move the consent agenda.
Wait, 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 wait. We also added a resolution, which everybody now has, so this will be 105, is that correct?
Yeah.
2012 dash 105.
Yeah, mhm.
What, are you talking about the edit started one?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna include that on the consent agenda as resolution number 2012 dash 105.
You have a 105 on the list already.
Oh, I'm sorry, because it's separate action, 106.
106.
Thank you. That's why we need to get this on the record.
So just to be clear, the consent agenda as it stands is everything but 97, 101, 102 are taken out, and this 106 was added? Everybody's-
Which is 106 being added?
106 is the-
Is the Occidental Litigation Resolution.
Where's 106?
So where's 105?
I don't see one.
105 is-
105 is under separate action.
It's, no, it's 05.
Oh.
05.
Typo.
So that should be 105?
That should be.
I have a comment on 106.
Okay.
Are we ready for that?
Sure.
Okay. I, I would be okay with the resolution if it ended up saying something other than, let's send this letter to our legislative district, because I would, this says draft, but I would want to change some things in this letter. I don't think, I think we could probably take out the, you know, operative paragraph of this letter and put it in the resolution and just pass the resolution on to them, and then whatever conversations ensued, which I'm sure conversations would ensue between our village council and our, our legislative leaders, you know, they would get the idea. But there's just, there's stuff in here, in this letter, that I personally would, I mean, I professionally would have to recuse myself from saying some of these things.
If, if I could explain how this came about, and, and what I think we can do is, say, in, in a form, in a form substantially as, as attached, subject to some changes, we can do that. But the reason this came together this way today was that the committee that is trying to negotiate a, a fix to this litigation is intending to gather up all of these resolutions and letters from all of the municipalities and deliver them in a large package altogether for, for impact sake, rather than to have them come in in drips and jams.
Phil, that was my question, though, is this a uniform letter that's being-
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
The committee drafted that, drafted that letter, the committee of lawyers that is working with the legislature right now.
I'm just going to recuse myself from this.
Okay, unless there are any other discussion items about the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I just wanted to say, can we pull out 106, because, just vote on it separately?
Yes, thank you, that's correct.
So one more time, 96 through 104, with the exception of 97, 101, and 102?
And 106.
Well, we'll do that separately, right, it's already, so 96 through 104, with the exception of 97, 101, and 102, first.
My second.
Well-
Was, was that a motion?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. There was a second?
It was an implied motion, I second.
I have a, yeah, I have a, Trustee Rosner made the motion, do we have a second?
No. Trustee Goldberg made the motion.
Thank you.
And Rosner, a second.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could we have a roll call, though, please?
Thank you. So everybody knows what you're voting on, right? This is the consent agenda with resolutions 2012 dash 06.
096.
096.
096 through 104, and resolution numbers 97, 101, and 102 have been removed from the consent agenda, and we've added them to resolutions under separate action in addition to resolution 2012-106, also for separate action.
Mhm.
Okay, this was a lot easy. So with that, we have a motion and second, and I'll call for roll call. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So our consent agenda has passed. Now we have resolutions for separate action. I'm going to start with resolution 2012 dash 105. This is the resolution authorizing the establishment of Municipal Election Date Advisory Committee.
Wait.
Should I do the consent?
Yeah, why don't we do it? We can go in numerical order.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I would like to do that. Let me do a cut and paste.
It was numerical order, that was five.
Okay, so then we'll start with resolution 2012 dash-
101.
101. This is a resolution authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute a service agreement with the Maplewood-South Orange Community Coalition on Race in the amount not to exceed $18,000.
If there is a motion and a second, then we can have our board discussion.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a number of comments. Number one, I think the attached service agreement is not a service agreement.
Can you speak up into the mic, second, you, Miss Trustee Levinson?
The attached service agreement is what I would consider not a contract or a service agreement. We talk about the funding to be 18,000 in the resolution. in a lot of cases, one to the, it adds up to 21.9, and then the total amount that's being referenced doesn't add up to what they claim is the total budget, what I add up to be is 142,000. I cannot parse this to differentiate between the 22.5 and the 18, and I have some questions about some of the services that are being provided, are they governmental services? So, I, I just cannot go forward with this proposal.
I thought we were gonna have the contract vetted by, by a committee. I thought we were gonna have this contract vetted by one of the committees to go over it, but it wasn't a-
Yeah, that's what I, I thought what was gonna happen is, in the interim, is anybody who had a problem with this, and by the way, I don't really disagree with your criticisms, I've stated them before as well, but I thought that was either resolved, or whatever problems or whatever things could be worked out, would be worked out in the interim. I have no problem continuing to try to work things out. I floated an idea at budget workshop last year as to what I would like to see performed, which is certainly a governmental function, as opposed to some of the things that they perform, like integration on the arts or something like that, but I just don't want to talk about this forever. So, I understand that if you are gonna vote against it, I understand why, and I certainly respect that, but I'm not foreclosing the opportunity to negotiate that service agreement, if it's negotiable. I don't think we've ever asked them publicly, is this negotiable? Would, at least with the exception of the budget workshop, where I asked them that last year, when I asked them if they would do a, a, you know, how integrated are our neighborhoods based on the 2010 census task?
Well, the, the other point was, and I think in the preamble of that service agreement, it doesn't say that they're not gonna come back next year, you know, I think in fact it says just the opposite, that they will be coming back next year.
Well, you know, trustee Levinson, I don't see that as an issue, because we made a decision, or we discussed it, that we're not, we're only gonna fund entities based on an RFP going forward on specific services the town, the town may need.
Well, that should be-
And so, does not automatic for 2013, that this decision of the 18,000 and the 12,000 was only for, you know, from the last discussion for 2012.
That should be made clear.
And, and, and so, I believe that we can now have in the committee work out the details of, of the specifics of the deliverable for 2012.
Well, I think we as a, a board should discuss the set of proposed tasks that they have, that they're asking us to fund, if that's agreeable with the rest of the board.
Here now?
Or a committee.
No.
Here now?
We-
Or a committee.
We've already had these discuss, I think that we can work out the details of the not to exceed 1,800.
I don't agree with that. No, I, I thought what was going to come back was a service or a contract for contracting of a specific set of services, and if a contract is coming to us, I think it should be, the numbers should add up, and should be based upon the request, at least to what we had agreed to, if that's an agreement, I don't-
Can I, can I make a friendly amendment to the motion that we send the inquiries that Howard would like to have answered, and any changes proposed, which may be rejected, I don't know, depending on how this vote goes, to the finance committee to work out with the applicant, but that we move forward, recognizing you may vote against this, but that we move forward on this motion.
And the fact is, is that, it's not that it's not in the budgets, the budget has appropriation in it, this is just for the approval of it, and-
I got it.
We, we need to get the correct contract.
I understand that, and I also have-
I could support that.
Good, and I have no problem having the administrator and the village council create whatever language we want to have, because my, I thought we were gonna have the resolution that trustee Rosner drafted on the agenda tonight, so it would be all wrapped up. It's not, and hopefully it'll be wrapped up when the budget passes, either at the next meeting or whenever it passes.
Yeah.
So, that should take care of that, and then, and then in finance committee, you can just work out the agreement.
Yeah, I think there needs to be things like, what happens if they don't meet their stated objectives, which is nothing, it's not in the agreement.
Okay. Janine, I, I respect what you're trying to do for the sake to keep things moving, I respect that, but I think, I mean, we're authorizing the execution of a service agreement, and if the service agreement is not ready for prime time, I don't think we should move forward with it. I have the exact same concerns that Howard does, and I sent an email to the administrator about it over the weekend, the numbers just don't add up, so we don't know what services we're buying, and I've made my concerns clear about this in, in general, but this particular agreement, it's just simply not ready. It's, it's the same quote-unquote service agreement that we've seen, you know, ad nauseam now, just stapled to this resolution, there's no, there's no binding, you know, limits on this, there's no deliverables, there's no, the numbers don't add up, it's, it's, it's not ready, and to vote on that, I think, would be premature.
I agree with what you've said and what Michael has said, I think we should let table it until it's ready to be looked at when it's complete.
All right, so we'll put it on the finance committee agenda.
I'm not, I'm not, I wanna vote.
Yeah, the motion's, it's been seconded, someone can move to amend it.
We have to, we, we have a mover and a second, we have to vote.
Well, I, I did move to amend in a friendly amendment, and she accepted the friendly amendment.
Could you, what's the language of your amendment?
Well, the motion is to pass the resolution, and the amendment is to send the details of the service agreement to the finance committee for resolution.
I'd be most comfortable if we put the exact language in, I'll just, in consultation with the finance committee after, to execute a service agreement, I mean, you, you, this is, it's your amendment, so you pick how you want to word it, but-
What was not detailed enough?
Sorry?
What wasn't detailed enough?
The exact words for the resolution to be.
About, in the therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the township of South Orange Village, that it does hereby authorize the village president to execute the attached service agreement with CCR to provide various services and programming, promoting race relations, understanding and diversity, after consultation with the finance committee, to be concluded by June 1, comma, in the amount of $18,000. Semi-colonian.
No, I don't think that, we made-
Can you make it June 10?
June 10, whatever day you want.
Okay.
Did you catch that?
I, I really, I'm not following where we're going.
We, we can, we can get that to the-
I'm just gonna go back to-
It's on the record.
To the audio record.
So, there, there was a motion for an amendment, was there a second for that motion?
I think the chair, the movement just has to accept it as a friendly amendment.
Yes, I accept it.
And, and help me understand the process, so that, when does the, when does the board and the public understand what the service agreement then becomes? We vote on it again? I, I just don't understand this process, it kinda goes to committee, but then what?
You, the only thing that is going to happen in the committee is that, first of all, Howard's gonna ask whatever questions he wants, and, and they would be wise to answer those questions, but 18,000 is being authorized, and no tasks that are not in the service level agreement, which is for more than 18,000, are being authorized. So, really, we're just asking CCR to do the math, come up with a bottom line that's 18,000, and, and, you know, essentially tell us what they're cutting, the same way the advocates for YouthNet did today, when they came to the podium and said they'd have to cut seven clubs, and whatever else they said, I, so they gave us the specifics of, if you only give us 12 instead of 15, or whatever the number is, then this is what will happen, so we understand that. That is exactly the conversation that's going to happen, so that there's an $18,000 bottom line, and we know exactly what tasks are agreed to, and I personally have full faith in the finance committee under the chairmanship of trustee Levinson, to figure that out in a satisfactory manner and negotiate it with CCR.
I, I would change it slightly, it's up to 18,000, because some of the items I do question as, as something that we want to provide.
That's what it says.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that is encompassed by the resolution, I don't think we're giving you authority to cut it below 18,000. If we pass a resolution for 18, well, if you don't like it, you have to vote against it, but if we pass a resolution for 18 and say, work it out, then it's 18, but it has to be worked out. Look, this happens to me all day long, right? The judge comes, and he says, you go in the room, and you adversary go in the room, and at 3:00 this afternoon, you're gonna have a settlement, come out and tell me what it is, right? Does this happen every day?
Mhm.
In every single county, in every single state in the United States, and probably in every civilized country, too. That's all we're doing here.
Right, then we need a vote.
The, the language in this resolution does say, in, in the amount not to exceed 18,000.
Right. But he said up to 18,000.
It's a difference. It's not to exceed.
Yeah, we know it's not to exceed, nobody's talking about more money.
The resolution doesn't, actually doesn't say not to exceed, it says in the amount of three different times.
Okay, well, the title says not to exceed, the title says not to exceed.
Maybe the title.
I think that's just a, the way South Orange-
Mr. President, we have a motion and a second.
Well, I just wanna make sure we clarify this language, does this language need to be the same, do we need to change one of them?
Well, the, the resolution itself just says in the amount of, in three different places, 18,000, it's-
Do you want to change?
The agenda says not to exceed on the agenda.
Trustee Bauer, do you want it? The title too?
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Please.
So, that was moved and seconded, and we had an amendment which was accepted, could we have a roll call vote?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
No.
Trustee Gould?
No.
Trustee Levinson?
No.
And trustee Rosner?
Yes.
We have a three a's, three nays, so I will ask the village president for his vote.
Yes.
Thank you. So, resolution 101 has passed. So, it'll be referred to the finance committee for vetting.
So, our next resolution, which we pulled from the consent agenda, 2012 dash 102?
Dash 102. This is the resolution authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute a service agreement with YouthNet in the amount not to exceed $12,000.
I'd like to start the discussion, if I could. I'd like to first amend this to provide YouthNet with $15,000.
Let's first have a motion and a second, and then you can amend it.
I move.
Second.
Thank you.
I move to amend it, so that YouthNet is provided with an amount not to exceed $15,000.
I second that.
Okay, although the, the process that we just did was that, having the original mover accept the motion, so we should do that the same each time, so. You moved it, trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Okay. And they accept it?
I do have comments to make about this. Written, so I'm gonna read off of my paper here. I'm urging the board to approve a $15,000 service agreement for YouthNet for 2012. YouthNet has done an incredible job programming for our middle school and high school children. Much of its programming is programming that we surely should be doing out of our rec department, but we can't do it, we don't do it as well as YouthNet does. They do it so much better than we do. They manage to keep the children engaged and occupied during those crucial after-school hours, when many children don't have parents at home, and can get in loads of trouble. I'm the only member of this board who's raised a teenage son, and I can tell you that in ages 12, 13, and 14, aliens inhabit their body. You don't know who you have living in your house, they are crazy, oh, excuse me, Howard, my goodness, did you have an alien as well? They inhabit the body, and they are very, very, oh, Janine, I'm so sorry!
You're not as unique as you think you are.
Well, aliens-
You're still in a minority, though.
Aliens inhabit all of the bodies.
Don't make an idiot out of trouble. I was waiting for that one.
Let me get back to the aliens, they inhabit the body, it's very, very difficult to keep the middle school children occupied, it is extremely difficult, and I think it's incredible that YouthNet manages to exceed at working with this very peculiar demographic group. Now, on March 26, the board voted to give the YMCA, may I note, that's a not-for-profit, $15,700 to monitor the basketball courts. As we've discussed, the majority of the young adults at the courts are not from South Orange, yet the board unanimously voted for the service agreement for the Y, without a word, it passed. So, it seems to me only logical and right and fair to vote for the YouthNet full funding tonight. It really serves only our children, unlike the YMCA contract. As Diane said, please don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, I urge you all to vote yes on this, thank you.
Actually, you made amendment, you made the-
No, but I have, I have some comments, too. The impression that we had was that we would not be coming back for additional funding next year, and what I heard before is that financially independent by the end of 2013, in the notes that we received before.
From the woman that's-
Yes.
Mhm.
Just, just the other we got to-
It's saying that she's expecting it for next year, too.
In the fourth paragraph, it says financially independent by the end of 2013, and then when Diane was up before, I think she said hope. It's different than, we will.
You know, before you- You know, I don't think, I mean, this goes for, for any, any organization, I think every year should stand on its own, I hate to tell you, but I think every year we should have vote on, on the, on the contract, if we want those services, and so forth, and I think next year, if we decide that YouthNet is providing a service that we want, and that we originally, as Nancy said, had to do the rec program, and we should vote on it if they need the funding, if, if we need the service and they need money to provide that service, we should pay for that service.
Trustee Rosner, I agree that, I don't want us to have a policy where we're saying these, these organizations are nonprofit, we're never going to do that again, I think that limits our flexibility in these very, very difficult fiscal situations now and in the future that municipalities have and will continue to have, so, and then, in that scenario, if we have a particular need that the village itself cannot handle, then we go out for an RFP. So, if we go out for an RFP, and YouthNet is the organ, wait, let me finish, if YouthNet is, is the best organization, that we decide, once we get all our, our responses back, and they can meet our services, then they will continue to deliver those services. But getting back to fairness, we had trustee Barrett come up with a compromise, because it was a perception of fairness that I feel strongly about, both organizations, in my opinion, are incredible assets to the town, including YouthNet, and I, I second everything that trustee Gould has said. I was even part of that initial group that helped launch YouthNet. As I stated before, I hired and paid an intern at my job as clerk to the Estes County to work during the summer, and, and that person worked 30 hours a week for eight weeks during the summer, and was an incredible young person, so, so I've shown through what I've just shared with you, my experiences, that I think it's incredible, but it's, these are all tough decisions, and it's a matter and a perception of fairness, and trustee Bauer was wise enough to come up with a compromise that, that, that I was able to support, because trustee Bauer and I recall that we thought that not, neither one of these institutions were gonna be funded for 2012, we made that hard decision, you know, with the, the narrow focus of we weren't going to fund nonprofits, so I was prepared, prepared to live with that tough decision not to fund any, and then, when trustee Gould was under the understanding that YouthNet would be funded fully and communicated to that, that created a scenario that we're here now, so I'm willing to compromise that we fund at the 20% discount count as we did Coalition on Race, and I don't want to do one thing for one organization that's in the same boat and not for the other, that is not fair.
I just want, I take exception to using the term funding, I still think that we're paying for services, just like, like she said about the YMCA, we're paying for services, so if the services cost 15,000, or 12,000, or 18,000, whatever that number is, we should be making a decision, and I think each organization should be standing on its own, and each funding agreement, each, if you want to call funding, each service agreement, each contract, needs to stand on its own each and every year, and I sort of disagreed last year, I agreed to, to vote last time, because I think both groups provide a service to the town, what the service for, what they may be worth is something different, it's come back to us, that the $3,000 cut would cut many programs, I'm not comfortable with making the cuts to those programs, so therefore, I would, I would agree to increase that to $15,000, and I don't think it's, and I think it stands on its own, separate from, from any other funding, whether it be YMCA or-
I'm not arguing that, I agree that it stands on its own.
Or the First Occupational-
But I agree that it stands on its own, however, if that's the case, then we should have said the same thing to Coalition on Race, that the 24, whatever, that we're gonna change it, and then, then show us the services that, they were not given the opportunity to do that.
Deborah, just to be, Janine and Howard, both last time at the last meeting, read off some services that they felt should not be included in that contract, and those services probably added up to more than $4,500, so in a sense, we're giving them over 100% of what we agreed to pay for in the service agreement, and here, we were cutting back 20%, so if you, if you follow your logic of doing 100% of each service that the board agrees to and hold, then we've done that exactly.
And the other thing I, I want to add, I agree with largely what Mark is saying, but, you know, it all depends how you define fairness, and Deborah, you've used that word a lot, and I, again, respect your desire for fairness, you are a very fair person by nature, and I mean that sincerely, and I appreciate your trying to be fair, but in my mind, fairness was, we communicated different things to these organizations last summer, last July- Last July, it was clearly communicated verbally and in writing to CCR there would be zero funding. So they could have planned for and budgeted for zero funding. They are getting money, so that's a bonus. They shouldn't have expected it, to be honest. YouthNet was never communicated there would be no funding. It was not. I agree, there was, let me finish. I agree there was some ambiguity from our budget workshop. I don't believe they were there. It was never, the outcome was never communicated to them. So they expected full funding. They planned for full funding. And last, at the last meeting, it was proposed to cut them 20% with no advance notice whatsoever. So I would question that as not being fair. So to use your, I would throw, you know, use your word back, I think that is not fair. So I think what Nancy's proposing is fair and is, you know, I echo what she said about the organization and the services they provide. And I think we should, we should give them the full funding they've requested.
Can I respond to that? Michael, you and I went back and forth a little bit on this. I don't know, it's probably a couple of weeks ago now, but that's definitely not my recollection. I realize we're all operating on recollection, but even though neither organization was given the direction that was to have resulted from the budget workshop, my understanding, or my recollection, rather, Diane Malloy got up to the podium, I believe it was at the September report, her quarterly report, or whatever, however frequent they are, and she specifically said, she confirmed, "I heard you loud and clear. Funding is ending. I'm supposed to become self-sustaining." And even in this letter that was passed out tonight, it says, "As Diane Malloy has conveyed to the committee already," I think she means us, the Board of Trustees, "YouthNet is working hard to become financially independent." It wasn't just working hard. She made the same representation, and, you know, you and I went back and forth as to who gets it. I realize some people hear it and don't necessarily listen, or they may even listen and not respond. But in my view, both organizations understood exactly what was going to happen based on the budget workshop, notwithstanding our own failure. And that's the only reason I'm even doing this, because I think some people understand that I'm not in favor of it, and I thought that this was gonna happen, as I think Trustee Levinson and Trustee Davis-Ford has already said that. But nevertheless, I do not find anything in the record, and you corrected me that, in fact, CCR had a letter which was clear in November, I think it was, or they wrote to us, whatever, I don't remember, but that they understood that that was a clear direction, and yet they came back for money. Diane Malloy did the same thing with YouthNet. The exact same thing. She stood at the podium and said, "I understand where you're going. I understood. I heard you loud and clear." And the fact of the matter is, then it was put in the budget. The administrator didn't know what the history of this was, so on and so forth. So, you know, in terms of what's fair, I'm not talking about fairness having anything to do with race or the content of what they do, the program, services, or anything like that. I'm just saying, we screwed up, and, you know, we had a decision, we screwed up. My understanding is, they both understood it anyway, and I don't understand why we're going back now on one of them. But, so that's why I'm gonna vote against it. It's nothing to do with the merit of YouthNet. It's a great organization.
And that's why I'm gonna vote against it. I'll support the $12,000, but I can't vote for this because we dropped the ball. Because if we told Coalition on Race, then why didn't we tell YouthNet if that's the case? But what Trustee Bauer just said, I recall that they both were, both organizations were aware of it. So then we, then the process of notifying the organization was unfair because we notified one organization that they weren't going to get funding and not the other.
I can assure you, YouthNet was not aware of it. And I heard the statement, the statements that Diane made the microphone was, you know, they're working on being self-sufficient, but they didn't give an end date for that.
I can support the, what's on here for $12,000, but I can't support...
I think Ms. Malloy's comments were directed that she saw the direction of it going, not necessarily that meant 2012, that was gonna be no money, that that was the direction that the board was going. So, not that I want to speak for them.
Well, everybody hears different things then, that's...
Just to be clear, I have a letter here from Chip Madison, Chair of the CCR, that was sent in November of 2011, and it says explicitly, "The current proposal includes office space," I'm excerpting here, "Current proposal includes office space at the Bayard, liability insurance coverage, and Internet access for five years. There is no offer of financial support." Couldn't be any more clear than that. The Coalition was clear last year, there was no offer of financial support. What YouthNet knew or didn't know, I don't know. There is no written documentation that was communicated to them.
But the point, I'm not disputing that, and this is what happened. A little over a month or six months ago...
I know.
Yeah, a little month or six months ago, I told Coalition there was nothing happening. Two days later, I get a, I see an email from YouthNet, oh, they're thrilled that they're getting $15,000. And that's how that whole process started, from my opinion, because I thought neither of the organizations unfortunately was budgeted for it. But I'm with you, Trustee Bauer. It's enough. Let's just call a vote. It is what it is.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote on the motion that was amended to include $15,000?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
No.
Trustee Davis-Ford?
No.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
So Resolution 2012-102, as amended, passed upon roll call vote. The last resolution we have...
There's two more.
Two more.
There's 105 and 106.
All right. 105 is the authorizing execution of the letter to state senators and assemblymen in the action entitled...
That one, I think, is 106.
106, right.
I think 105 was the resolution that was originally on it, which is for the...
Election date.
Elections.
Yeah, election.
Does anyone know what this is? We've never seen this or discussed it.
Could we just read the title first?
I have it here. I just cut and pasted in the wrong order. Resolution 2012-105, Resolution Authorizing the Establishment of a Municipal Election Date Advisory Committee.
What committee did this come from?
This didn't come from a committee?
I thought we said we wouldn't do resolutions unless they came from a committee.
I don't know, I don't necessarily recall that. I think for trustees to bring something to the board, it should go through their respective committees, but I don't think...
What's the...
Sorry?
You want this?
Yeah, yeah, this was a resolution that I added. And this is to establish a committee to study what day the election should be, whether it should be in May or whether it should be in November.
I have a comment. This is like, it's like beating a dead horse that's in the grave and already decomposing. I mean, we have gone over this over and over and over again. I think we had a straw vote. Why don't we just take a vote on the election date? I don't see why we'd need a committee for this. Makes no sense to me.
And to put a finer point on that, we discussed at the last meeting, having an ordinance on first reading at this meeting, and I asked the status of that, and I was told, "Fill out the form," and it would be put on the agenda. I filled out the form. It's not on the agenda. So I don't know what happened to that. It didn't get put on the agenda. I have a copy of the ordinance, and I'd be happy to introduce that ordinance on first reading if my colleagues would prefer.
What you can do is make a motion to introduce it on first reading for the next meeting, but I don't think you can bring an ordinance to the board that quickly. And just to clarify, I mean, a side note, when you submit agenda item requests, you know, those are, those are requests. And every two weeks, the village clerk and the administrator and I sit down and we create the agenda, and not everything makes it on the agenda, and that was one of those that didn't. If you'd like to move that tonight under new business for the next meeting, you're certainly free to do so.
Again, I re-watched the video today, and I was explicitly, we brought this up at the last meeting, and I was, I asked, "What's the status of this?" And I was told, "Fill out the form, and we'll put it on the..." Because Deborah, if I, as I recall, you asked Alex to put it on the agenda. He said he wasn't going to do it. So I said I would put, I would fill out the form, which I did, and it did not, and I have gotten no, I don't understand why do we have a process to put things on the agenda when things go into a black hole? If things, if we request something to be on the agenda and there's no time for it or whatever, we should be notified, or we should have a discussion about it. It shouldn't just be vetoed. That's why we have a board. We have a democracy, and we have seven people that get a say. And if you don't like something, you can vote against it. That's your prerogative. But to just simply not put something on the agenda, that's censorship. That's just unconstitutional or undemocratic, to use some of your language.
Well, I can certainly make a note that what we can do for items that are requested to be added and not listed on the agenda, we can notify people of that. But, you know, this is, this has always been the process. The village president has always been the creator of the agenda. That's actually how these governments work.
But in the past, if the village president had any issue with items on the agenda, and very few were at issue with the past village president, we'd be notified and we'd discuss it. This time, you come and look at the agenda on a Friday afternoon, and oops, what you've requested, such as the business recruiter discussion, now these poor people are sitting here, attend, they're gonna be sitting here longer to listen to it, it's off the agenda. No reason, no rhyme, no reason, just, oh, it's off the agenda. I don't understand why I'm filling out a form.
Well, I, again...
I don't get it. Why bother?
Because that's how items are requested to be added. Again, this actually isn't different than it's ever have, has been...
And why are they arbitrarily removed? That's my concern.
It's really, it's really not arbitrary, and we can actually discuss that later. We have this resolution before us right now. And again, I think the point about getting back to people who add something about what the status is is fine. I think that's a good suggestion, and we can certainly incorporate that in the process. And if we want to discuss that more later tonight, I think we can do so, but we, you know, we have a resolution before us right now. I can certainly explain a little bit about why I thought this might be a good idea for us to consider, and then I'd be curious for any discussion people might have, and then we can just take a vote on it. The Charter Review Committee, as people have mentioned, worked on, this is part of a number of issues. And the Charter Review study was pretty thorough, but one of the areas that it didn't address in incredible detail was the election, and whether the election should be in May or in November. And there were a number of issues that were brought up that are actually not in the Charter Review Committee report about this. You know, for example, I'll just name a couple because we've kind of talked about this before a little bit. The public comments at the Charter Review Committee meetings did not show public opinion in favor of this. There were more questions about it than there were people in favor of it. There really isn't a detailed consideration of the issues of partisanship, of outside money being used in our elections, of the issue of people who are running in South Orange having to compete with candidates who are running for larger offices, and whether that would encourage them to spend more money or not. And when it was recommended to the board, it was recommended to be put on the ballot as a public question, which this board did not do. It was one of the issues that was highlighted specifically by the committee as a major change to the charter, and the committee recommended that we ask the public whether we should do this or not, which this board decided not to do. And aside from a lot of discussion about turnout rates and how much higher the turnout rates would be in November versus May, this would also, moving the elections is significant in a way because it would extend the terms by about eight months of all the people on this board right now. And to do something like that, to extend your own terms by eight months, I think at least the public should have an opportunity to weigh in on that. And again, there are a dozen more points I could go through, but I guess, you know, the point being that none of these were put in the Charter Review Committee report about this. And unless I'm incorrect, and this is in the resolution as well, there are no deadlines coming up. I don't know if clerk or council want to comment on that, or in no danger of missing.
Can I just make one comment about the committee reports? If you looked at the full report, the worst there was past history of the voter turnouts, some of the comments you made about the reasons why some people favored in May versus November were in the minutes, but you had to read more than just, you had to read the whole report, you know, which is not the summary pages. And I think that we pretty much hit a standstill in that committee, that the people who were in favor of May elections didn't seem to be bending one way or the other, including myself. And the people in favor of November were pretty insistent on that, and they weren't bending in any direction. It didn't look like you were gonna change anyone's mind. And I actually feel I have the same feeling up here on this board, that people's minds are made up, they're not changing on it. But this committee that you want to put together, which I'm not really in favor of, but who would you want to be on this committee? Because I sure don't want to do it, but I don't know if any other trustee even wants to do this committee. Or are you talking about a residential committee or a, I just didn't know who you were thinking of on this committee?
The membership is in the resolution. It's seven voting members, which is myself, two trustees, and four residents, and then ex officio members, the village minister, the clerk, and council.
I have no problem with, one, I don't understand why we're in a rush to put this in effect. What I would like to do is to find out from the election this November, because there are some municipalities that have changed from a May election to a November election. I'd like to see some of the statistics of how the voter turnout may have been changed because, or how the elections, the voting may have changed because of the shift from May to November. But we don't have to do this until January.
Howard, two questions on that. Wasn't this law that allows nonpartisan towns to move to November, that was done back in like 2010? It's been, it was done on...
No, it's very recent, isn't it?
So another, my, just this year. My question is, were there any towns that did it last year that have done it already? Do we know?
No, this is brand new.
I don't know, gotta talk into my...
I know the board, I know the board, I know the Board of Ed is...
This is gonna be the first cycle that you will see a change.
I know the Board of Ed was very, very new. That was done within the cycle. I thought municipal was done previously.
This is the first time you're going to see, this November, you're gonna see a change. I do not believe the law was enacted in time to have the last general election reflect a change.
Correct.
My only, and again, that's a fair point, Howard. My only thought, you're right, there's no hard and fast date. My only thought is, while we're doing the charter changes, and this really is an outgrowth of the Charter Review Committee and the charter changes, we might as well make, do them both at the same time, while it's fresh in our minds, while it's, while we're doing it, do it all together. I don't, I don't, just don't see the benefit of...
Well, like I said, like I said to you in the email today, that when we discussed it in the charter, we took out, or we attempted to take out a specific date. But as Steve said, you can't do that. So what we did was that we put both dates in and said it's dependent upon what we have as a statute or as an ordinance.
Correct, correct.
And so the option is there, and we have until January to pass this. I would love to see some metrics, some statistics that come out of the November election to see if it makes any difference. The other thing is that, as Mark says, the voting machines are not even capable of handling this variant of partisan, nonpartisan, and all the, all the other options that you have in having a vote. I would like to see what the outcome is.
Well, let me weigh in. Since it's, I wanted to confirm because you know where I stand. I'm for November elections.
I didn't know that.
But since we have until January to make a decision, and this is a decision that will be in place for at least 10 years, is that true?
Yes.
So I don't have a problem if some, somebody, if you want to look, Howard, I know that you really want to see data. You, you're looking at this from data specifics, as you're a data guy and a numbers guy. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, as long as we put, the only way I would go along with this, Howard, to make you happy, Howard, because, you know, I try to do that, is that we say December to something, whatever it is, or January the 5th, we vote on this up or down. That's the only way I would go along with this, because I don't want to be put in a position that by missing a deadline, then I'm stuck with May when I really want to move it to November.
You actually have to put this first reading on December, I think.
Yeah, well, I want us to come up with that date before I'd agree, to let you get your numbers.
One other question, I guess, sort of related to that. Do we know, are there any nonpartisan towns that have done this? So there will be data to look at. Do we know?
Yes, I...
I don't know if there's any in Essex County, but I think there is data on this.
Yeah, there's none in Essex County, but I know there is, there are some municipalities. I don't have a list of them yet, but we can get the list.
Nope, no other towns in Essex County?
I don't believe in Essex County.
That's interesting.
Not many nonpartisan.
Yeah.
That's right. I have a question.
This is not a silly question. Can we move to reduce our terms by six months, and then have the elections this November? Is that a possibility?
That's called resigning.
Or a recall, I could do a recall. A recall myself.
There's a statute for that.
So you can't, we're not, we're not looking at that. I'm just curious. Just, just throwing it out there. Nope.
We're, we're, we're passed, we're passed, I mean, although, yeah, it's passed for November.
Steve, you can trust me one, but I think there's, the old statute is you can't-
That was the question.
You can't extend terms unless, unless the governor passes the statute that allows you to extend terms, right?
He did.
He did?
It's included in the statute.
This, this statute-
Oh, this one says you can extend terms. Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Look at the votes.
So if you want a former committee, I would volunteer for being a-
But you got to, you got to vote on this.
Yeah, didn't move in a second at the beginning.
Right. Yeah, we would need a motion and a second.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I would move.
Is there a second?
What is this?
Why don't we just wait until the-
You've got to move in a second.
Got a motion and a second.
It's a motion for former committee.
Rather than develop the committee in advance of the data, why don't you just wait till November, see what the date is, then decide whether you want to have a committee or not?
I think there's so plenty of work, I mean, I, I think that variable that Howard brought up, up about looking at the November elections is one of many things. But there's plenty of time to study this before then, and then when that happens, there'll actually only be a short amount of time to get those numbers together and then figure out what it means. So that would have to probably be like the last thing the committee worked on. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. This is a motion to approve Resolution 2012-105. Trustee Bauer?
No.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
No.
Trustee Gould?
No.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
No.
Resolution 2012-105 did not pass.
We have one more resolution for separate action.
Thank you. This is the resolution authorizing execution of the letter to state senators and assemblymen in the action entitled New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection versus Occidental Chemical Corporation.
May I move? Is there a second?
Seven. Roll call vote.
Trustee Bauer?
I'm recusing myself on this.
I was hoping there was some more substantial ones.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 2012-106 passed.
Okay, now we have our second public comment period tonight. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, just name and address, please.
John Perkett, 661 Longview Road. I think what this board did tonight, those who voted in favor of funding the CCR set a terrible precedent. You basically are authorizing the payment of taxpayer money for services that you don't know what they are. There's no specificity in the contract as to what they will be providing. It's not even a contract. I have never heard of a government body allocating funds for something and not knowing what they are going to be getting. You have abrogated your responsibility, and you have thrown it to the finance committee, whatever that means, and I don't know who's supposed to vote on it. I don't know what the elements are that they're going to be voting on. I don't know what the process is for public input. I don't know what the legality of it is, and I suspect those of you who voted yes don't know either. And I don't think that fatigue with the issue is a reason for ramming it through. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again, it's Tricia Gorman, 377 Vos. I just wanted to say thank you for passing the first round of this ordinance, and I wanted to offer all of you, I'd like to volunteer my time to be part of, or at least have the opportunity to interview for being on the Historic Commission, but more importantly, I'd also like to volunteer my time as a committee member for trying to find a happy and harmonious resolution with the sisters. I have expertise in this area, and I'd like at some other time privately, maybe we can discuss that, or I can explain to you how I feel I could be instrumental in helping bringing buyers to the Mary Lawn sisters.
Thank you. Can you leave your name, contact information with the clerk?
There's a link on the, there's a link on the website on the left side for volunteers, which allows you to fill out your name and leave which committees you want to volunteer.
But this, but this isn't listed yet.
I mean, this is kind of an urgent thing, that's why I thought I would just speak out.
This is not listed. No, just leave your name, contact information with the clerk, please.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And you can continue arguing that, but you've-
Thank you.
Hello again, Sharon Pigeon, 412 Vos Avenue. I just wanted to add to the Mary Lawn discussion.
Oh, would you talk into the mic, please?
I just wanted to add to the Mary Lawn discussion. I've had title searches done on the properties. I've looked at the original title on the property, the title that conveys the property to the Sisters of Charity, and then the title that conveys ownership from the Sisters of Charity to the Mary Lawn School. And it looks like the original covenants that are on that property are still intact, which would restrict the potential development on those properties. And so if there are any further conversations with Mary Lawn of the Oranges or the Sisters of Charity, I just wanted everybody here to know that they might be restricted on what could be built. And that would be of interest to potential developer. It would also, I think, affect the purchase price of that property. I think the property would be worth more with the house than without the house, for what that's worth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Their time's a charge.
Who are you?
Yes, every time you get up.
Okay, sorry. John Sumaro, 179 Scotland Road. This is regarding the Mary Lawn-
It's a different address this time.
John, you could have said that, by the time you asked the question, you could have said your name and address.
Oh, sorry. John Sumaro, 179 Scotland Road. I've got a couple of questions for the board that I think they need to take into consideration. First is, we're well aware that the school, or any owner anywhere in this town, can currently right now demolish anything, and the question really is, is what is the fine for, if they decide to have a wrecking ball hit the house tomorrow? What are the fines? I mean, because we don't, whether you have a historic preservation, whether you have a permit, whether you don't have a permit. I lived in Jersey City, historic district, someone ripped down the facade of a building, everybody went crazy, but it was gone. Yes, they got fined, because there was a fine. I think that that's also something that needs to be informed to the school about doing something that's preemptive, because they're looking for maximum dollar value. Second thing is, a lot of us have done a lot of research, and we know what the situation is with the Catholic Church and funding, and we honestly really feel that the Board of Trustees needs to take into consideration the entire property, not just what's on the market currently right now, because our feeling is that Mary Lawn may make a decision based on the amount of money they get for the property, whether to continue with the school or not. And I think it's going to be a decision that's going to be 11th hour, and just send the kids elsewhere, shut the shutter to school, and then you're going to have the full, I would assume it's about five acres of property to have as a redevelopment, minus hopefully the house. The third item is that, take it into consideration in something that the previous speaker spoke on, and something that was brought up in some West Montrose Neighborhood Association meetings regarding this topic, is that in Montclair, the Marlborough Inn is a historic Victorian in which the property around it was there for years, and they decided to sell off the property, and they developed-
Three seconds.
They developed the property. They developed the property by putting a street behind it and doing one-family, single housing, more like a downtown area. These are the kind of things that the community can rally around, the community can support, as long as the development is done correctly. We are all about ratables and increasing the tax base in this town, but you have to work together with the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Mark Bass, 240 Montrose Avenue. Just want to know with the Mary Lawn property, what's the current zoning, and what are the rules around changing the zoning if they need to, and what can the board do or cannot do about zoning changes?
Zone currently five, five to the acre, I think it is, and the only way to change the zoning is if this board agrees to do it, which I don't think there's any willingness for us to do it right now.
We don't do that, don't we?
The property's currently zoned for single-family housing, or?
Single-family housing. If they can fit five on their, on that property.
Okay, thank you.
That's the current zone.
Thank you.
Wow, who is that?
Good evening. Business Recruiter Trustee Alyssa Anderson, a longtime resident of this town. When are you going to strike a deal about the taxes?
Thank you, Alyssa.
I think we have a deal.
Yeah. That would be a nice deal.
1073 25 Meeker Street. 325 Meeker Street, 19 South Orange Avenue. Because, partly because the business recruiter position wasn't on the agenda tonight, I get to spend the evening with you guys, which has been delightful.
Mutual, Ben.
Yeah, I get-
So you have more respect for us, because we spend all this amount of time taking-
And respect for you because we talk a lot about fairness and honoring our promises. And we talked about one of the, you know, with Usenet and whatnot, and how we had to fund them, because we didn't tell them we weren't going to fund them. You said that you would fund the business recruiter position a month before, month and a half before the city advisory committee made the recommendation to the board. That was taken into consideration by the advisory committee, based on the straw poll here that was unanimously said that it would be done. The, the, the major point, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the major point here is, and the city advisory committee made this very clear, you're asking business and building owners to put extra skin in the game. You cannot do that without putting extra skin in your game yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. Okay, this is a, the report section of our agenda. To start with the village president's report, I want to thank people for coming out to the state of the village. It was a really nice turnout here in Village Hall. We had people from the state legislature, from the county, the schools, Maplewood, Seton Hall. It was a really great group of people, the Board of Ed, it's a real, a lot of people not only serving our community in other capacities and other governments, but also residents and volunteers in town. A summary of the address went out in the Gaslight Newsletter, which people should have gotten in their mailboxes. They can also watch the video on our website at southorange.org/sotv. And hopefully this is something that will continue many years into the future. I think it's a good opportunity to recap a year. Unfortunately, only maybe 1% of the things we've done was able to really be talked about in an hour, but hopefully it was still informational for people, and I'm definitely looking forward to do it again next year. I'll keep that short tonight. A report from the village administrator.
Likewise, I had hoped before tonight that you were going to get the first formal monthly written report, then I got sidetracked spending my weekend responding to DCA's budget inquiries, but it's very close, and you will get it this week, I promise. And in light of that, and the hour, I will defer then and let you read that instead of listening to me tonight, so that's it.
Financial and Personnel Committee?
I have nothing to do.
Legal and Personnel?
We had a meeting earlier this evening, and we had a robust, or full, agenda. There are three items I'm going to talk about that I'd like to share. We, I want to pass this out, we, for all of you to see, if we could pass these down. There are two documents attached to the packet that you're receiving, and the, one is a written policy on email communication, and we reviewed it in our legal committee, and we're asking that you look at this and get back to us for any feedback or thoughts on the policy, but this is a, a resolution will be drafted regarding this email policy and put on the agenda to be voted on. One of the goals for the Legal and Personnel Committee this year is to put in place some basic policies so that everyone is clear of what, how we should communicate, but also to, you know, to protect the village and the trustees for any potential liability regarding how we communicate, and so that we don't violate the, the Oprah Law, which is called the Sunshine Law, the Open Publics Records Act.
We're both meeting that.
Public Means Act, thank you, Trustee Goldberg. The other, it's a long meeting, and I'm just thinking about, we have to go into executive session after this. The next item that you'll see in the packet is a email disclaimer that will also be part of the, our policy, and this email disclaimer will be included on all the email communications that we send as a trustee, or any individual working in the village. And this is a sample of, of the email disclaimer that is now being used by the village clerk, Robin Klein. So we'd like you to look at that, if there's any feedback or suggestions you have, but this is pretty much the way we agreed in our legal committee that it's going to look and what we're going to use. And again, we'll create a resolution to formalize the policy regarding the email disclaimer. The only, yes?
Go, go ahead.
And the last thing that I want to talk about is a written policy regarding contract repository that will be distributed to you. No, you and the village clerk and Barry, our administrator's going to work on, on that policy to be distributed to the board for review. And I think that's all I'm going to share with as far as some actions that are going to be taken in the near future, and the rest of the items are still in process of being completed, determined, and to be presented to the legal committee for review, and so I will pass on discussing all those other items at this time. That ends my report for tonight.
Can we get these in electronic format? Can someone email these out to the, to all of us?
Yeah.
Let's scan it or something.
Well, in text would be nice. Planning and zoning?
We're meeting on Wednesday, the 21st. I think I gave an update on the last one.
Public Safety-
Wait, wait, Wednesday, that's Monday, the 23rd.
It's the 23rd, Wednesday, the 23rd.
No, wait, actually, no. Monday's the 21st. It's not Monday.
It's Wednesday, the 23rd is the meeting, right? Wednesday, the 6th, is it this Wednesday? It's Robin. It's this Wednesday.
Is this Wednesday?
16.
The 16th? Yeah, Alyssa, no, that's right. The 16th?
More importantly, the Rangers beat the Devils 3 to 0.
Public Safety Committee?
Yeah, Public Safety. So we met on May, we met on May 1st. There were a number of issues that we talked about, and some that we need to talk about a little bit further here. Bear with me just a second. One, there was the request from Chief Shalell to have us implement a, what he called a secondhand purchase ordinance, that would require merchants who purchase secondhand items to hold on to them for a certain number of days. Initially, it was a long period of time, but the, the committee recommended it should probably be a more manageable period of time, say three to four days. This is in order to deter pawning or, you know, that type of activity. Yeah, pawning of stolen materials, exactly. So I think the action item was for council to take a look and to see what other towns have done, and potentially put together an ordinance.
We've discussed that also in the legal committee.
We did.
And one of my choices to sit with Chief Shalell to discuss the details from his perspective.
Okay, so he's volunteering your court on that, Stephen? Okay, thank you.
And he'll bring a, trustee Goldberg, he'll, his deliverable is to present a draft ordinance next meeting as a result of sitting down with Chief Shalell.
To discuss, and then it'll be first reading somewhere thereafter.
Yeah, and to bring it to the next legal meeting and then we'll give feedback and then we'll present it to the board for your feedback and discussion.
Good, thank you. We talked about National Night Out, which is scheduled for August 7th. It's an annual event we've done for the past few years. We were trying to figure out the funding for it this year. We were hoping to do it jointly with our colleagues in Maplewood. Makes logical sense, we're so close together, and it seems kind of silly to have two parallel events in two disparate towns right next to each other and to alternate years like we do, let's say for the baseball parade or other events. I know Sheena Cullum of the Citizens Public Safety Committee reached out to Maplewood and they were going to discuss it, but I haven't heard, I have not heard the outcome. I know we tried last year to do this and they basically turned us down, but hopefully we'll have better luck this year and they'll want to participate. I think we had a great event last year and it'd be great to share with our neighbors.
Trustee Goldberg, I think she was trying to reach out to Marlon Brownlee.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Okay, because he chairs their public safety committee.
Yep. One thing that's, I guess, somewhat of an action item, the principal at South Mountain Annex has requested that the zone in front of the school be designated as a drop-off, pickup zone. I think technically it's on the books now as a no parking zone, although it's functioned in front of South Mountain Annex on Glenview Road. The school, the little school. It's technically a no parking zone, but it acts as a drop-off, pick-off, pickup, drop-off, pickup area, and it just needs to be formalized. So assuming there's no objection to that, I think procedurally, again, that's what's in place today, it's just codifying the ordinance. So if everyone was okay with that, I would ask council to take a look at the current ordinances and see what we need to do to revise that, to make that a pickup, drop-off zone.
Michael, pickup, drop-off zone means the parent does not believe the car, it means the kids get out of the car?
I mean, the way, I mean, again, it's been a number of years since my daughter was at that school, but when she was, the way it worked is you literally had a line of cars, your kid left, you did not park, you did not get out of your car, your kid left while you were there, and you moved on and cars moved up. It literally was a drop-off zone.
This is the way it's happening now, it's still...
Can you make sure there's a no idling sign there?
They shouldn't sit idle.
Yeah, I don't want any idling.
Well, the problem is right now it's no parking and so people are...
No parking or no standing.
Yeah, maybe both, which isn't, people aren't doing it anyway, so we're bringing the law in accordance with the reality. The SOPD recognition ceremony, something that we started last year as an annual event. We talked about doing it on the 21st, we talked, but actually it was kiboshed and now I think we're scheduled for, going to put it on the 30th for our meeting, our next meeting, our next BOT meeting.
That's a shame, I won't be here. The 21st is such a short meeting.
It wasn't my decision.
Oh, whose decision was it? Because at the meeting, we agreed. Even the big chief agreed with me. Shalell. So what happened?
I don't know. Robin told me, Robin told me that was not going to be possible.
Pardon me?
Robin conveyed that it was not going to be possible to have it on the 21st.
All right. It's late.
Bear with me one second. The best practices consultant is, that best practices study is ongoing. They were going to be spending three days on site next week here to meet with the police department, to move forward, to get, you know, interact directly with the police department. And then lastly, the Citizens Public Safety Committee gave their update. The toy drive is complete. Thanks very much to the clerk's office for handling the enormous volume of toys that came in. Those have now been distributed. The toy drive is now officially over, it was for the month of April. And the Citizens Public Safety Committee, their next great update is they put out their first edition of their newsletter called SO Safe, as in South Orange Safe. They issued that, I guess that was last week, and they've had well over 500 views so far, and it's accessible through a variety of sources. I know the Alternative Press did a story on it, Patch did a story on it, and it went viral a lot.
Even the news record, right?
Not yet. It went viral on Facebook, it was all over. So if you have not seen it, it's a great resource.
You'll get to it next year.
Yeah, and so that, so that's a great publication. Hopefully they'll do that periodically to keep people informed of what's going on with public safety. And then lastly, the committee, Citizens Public Safety Committee is now focusing on a fundraising golf tournament for the rescue, as a fundraiser for the rescue squad. The date is scheduled to be in October, I believe it is, right? October?
I think it's October the 14th or 15th or something like that.
Yep.
They purposely weren't telling me because they didn't want me to find out.
Nice. And that's all I have. Public works?
Public works, first I'd like to know if there's going to be a quorum for the scheduled meeting on May 23rd.
That's good with me.
Howard, May 23rd? Or are you going to the competing event on First Suburbs?
I'm going to First Suburbs, so let's mark.
Can we have the meeting without you, or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Secondly, I'm just going to report on the River Greenway Committee, really just a request since it deals with public works and infrastructure. I need guidance from the board on negotiating and I'd like some assistance from the administrator, village council, the village president, or anyone else who would like, Mr. Rosner, to negotiate with five or six property owners from whom the village would need easements to complete the bicycle and pedestrian path in Greenway from South Orange Avenue to Third Street. And I brought with me plans, which, you know, anybody who wants to volunteer for that can take a look at them. They do involve a little bit of loss of parking, very little, but there is some minimal loss of parking. And we need to move that forward because this is on for a master plan amendment at the planning board on June 4th, if that's a Monday, and at this board for information purposes and feedback on June 11th.
Does that include...
And I don't want the property owners to be the last to know.
Does that include transit property?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've already had, you know, about a year and a half of a discussion with them about that, so I...
I talked to them about, between 10 and six years ago about that, but they keep changing executive directors, so, you know. When this comes to pass, who knows who'll be in office? But thank you. So if people could let me know, because I need to form a little posse and we need to go out and talk to people with plans in hand. Okay. Okay, okay, so we got the posse. And let's see, what else is there?
Get to take horses.
No, no, it's a horseless posse. I have a request to recreation, but that's next, so I'll just, that's it.
Recreation?
I'm going to answer your request. Our next meeting is the 24th. We're going to move our meetings from the 4th Tuesday to the 4th Thursday, mostly because Mark and I were having difficulty with the back-to-back meetings Monday and Tuesday. So it would be the 24th, we do them at 6:30, Janine, but whenever you can arrive, we will hold your issues until then. And please join us. I don't have anything else to report. Everything else, yes, she has an issue she wants to discuss. And everything else is on the minute switch, are posted.
Okay, we have a couple of discussion items tonight. Could village council give a quick update on East Orange Water?
Sure. Now that we have the special master finally appointed, we've been engaging with him. He has requested a full copy of the record. I volunteered to do that, to be sure that we got all the pieces to him that we wanted him to see. That occurred last week. I have sent him an email indicating that there were a number of matters that we had considered moving by motion, urgent matters, moving by motion, but we had not done that in anticipation of his appointment. I asked him for guidance, how he wanted to do that, whether he wanted that done formally or informally. He indicated that he would like to do that via telephone conference, which he suggested that we hold next week early. I have not responded yet, I'm going to, he indicated he would hold it this week if it was urgent enough. There's nothing that's that urgent, we're going to respond, we'll hold a telephone conference early next week. Next time, I'm not really, I don't want to indicate what the issues are right now until I reveal them. I mean, we can talk about them in executive session, but until I actually make them, make the pitch to the special master, I'd rather not tip our hand, what those matters are.
Okay. Next discussion item is potential completion of a salary survey, which was something our former interim administrator had discussed with us and I think at the time we agreed to do. And I think at this point we need direction as to whether we're still planning on completing a salaries study or survey. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so. And I did have a chance to speak to Mr. Burkholder and I think it kind of fell through cracks, but I know trustee Levinson did get back to him with his comments, so he basically has the answers to what he was looking for and is ready to go, but I just wanted to make sure that this was still on, because it was sort of on before I got here.
Well, it was my understanding that we had talked, we had authorized it, although quite frankly, once we knew the little Christmas presents that Mr. Burkholder was going to give on the way out, I would question the need for it. If we have an opportunity to pull it back, I would say absolutely forget it, but I thought we were passed on, I thought that train had sailed.
I thought we paid for it.
Train had sailed.
I sound like you.
Did we pay for it worth it? There was like $3,000 to go or something like that? Am I close? We paid for it as, as the interim administrator, then he was going to tack on another X amount?
That's exactly right.
We paid for it. We paid for a portion.
It was already included in the early out.
In his hours, he was doing it as part of his hours, I thought, and then he had another $3,000 or something, is that what he wanted?
That's it.
I'm with Michael, I think since he gave out the Christmas goodies, there's no reason for the salaries study, he kind of, he made it up himself and then he gave out the money, so, you know, why pay him to do that?
Plus he's retaining ownership of it, plus he's got a market to attend to.
Okay, I can, I mean, was there like a contract or agreement?
I think there was a resolution. He's already, he's already voided the agreement because he's well past the deadline. We talked about that, this was 30 days after he, after he left, so if there was an agreement to...
If the consensus is, if we're not obligated, then we're not interested. Consensus.
Maybe he wants to come back and give it to us at discount. I got back to him what, three, four months ago, five months ago?
Okay. Mr. Lewis, would you like to give a quick update on village hall renovation?
Yeah, moving along, there's actually a meeting scheduled for tomorrow with the engineer, Mr. Rother's office, the construction management firm, the architect, myself, to finalize the specifics in the construction management contract. The architect is...
Can you get more?
The architect is moving forward with preparing the project plans and specifications on schedule. We are, again, moving forward, still, there's a lot of IT work going on that our IT director, Stan Wilkinson, is taking the lead on in terms of cabling and connectivity and all that, so things are moving along.
So are we on schedule? When will we begin the move out?
We'll have a much better idea, I think, after tomorrow's meeting. My understanding is the architect's still moving along, we're still with the expectation that we will be going out to bid this summer and, you know, then a time period for the advertised bids to be out, a time period to receive them, make the award, but, yeah, we're still targeting this fall for the move out.
Can you be more specific about when it's going to bid?
Pardon me?
Can you be more specific of when it's going to bid?
I will be happy to send an email after the meeting tomorrow morning. Once we meet with the architect and the construction manager, I'd be much more comfortable kind of pinning down the timeline, that's one of the things on the agenda.
Will you, yeah, send a recap of that meeting, that'd be very helpful.
Will do.
Thank you.
Could you shed some light as to the, where we're going to be going temporarily? We've heard through the grapevine that there are, I thought we had agreed that we were going to be going to Second Street Lot, and then I heard through the grapevine, just through the grapevine, we've never discussed it here, that there are other sites being considered, and I'd like to know definitively what discussions have taken place and what the other options are, if there are any.
I just, before you answer, I just want to clarify that the board was told about this twice in emails, so it's not grapevine, it's emails.
Oh, the news, well, the news record is where I'm at, my source.
The board has been told about this on multiple occasions.
Maybe one of the sites, but I heard about a second site and that came out at the planning meeting and... Yeah, that's what I had heard too.
On the news record article references two offers.
So I'd just like to kind of know what's going on.
Well, the news record article also said that the board wasn't briefed and that was incorrect.
No, yeah, the only, as of now, the original plan all along was trailers over in the location. The architect is continuing to move forward with those included in the specifications as an alternate that'll have a separate price. During that period and then probably within the last two months, the one, the only site, other alternative that I'm aware of, Seton Hall representatives approached the subject and I understand it's a building that was previously looked at, was basically passed on any, any further investigation because initially Seton Hall was unwilling to commit for a period of time that would meet our needs, because they envisioned needing the building sooner than that. That's in the building on the corner of South Orange and Terrell. Their plans have changed and been backed up and have since even been backed up more since two months ago when this first came up. So that we have, are looking at that, looking at some options, there's still some connectivity and networking considerations. Quite frankly, if we get over those, then obviously the next discussion would be to try and evaluate the pros and cons of both options. To a certain degree, we wouldn't know until we get the alternate bid in for the trailers to know exactly how much, we do have an estimate from our engineer for the trailer option and would then have to weigh that versus whatever the pros and cons of the other one, assuming that we can overcome all the internet and IT type hurdles.
There's also a question of whether we want to move village hall out of the downtown business district and make it less convenient for most people.
Well, that's, it certainly one, you know, and again, it's looking at all options, pros and cons there, that is certainly an op, you know, one of the, I guess, the cons of moving down there. The flip side of the trailers is you lose not only the parking spaces where the trailers will go, but then you also lose additional parking that would have to be reserved for village staff and visitors to the interim village halls. So there's, there's pros and cons on all sides and I think that we have adequate time to kind of do the diligence, weigh the options, come back with, you know, a recommendation of pros and cons, and then ultimately you'll make the decision.
I have no problem with that, you know, we make the decision. Let's get all the information on both options, it's wonderful that I have an option, and, you know, we will listen to what the options are and we'll make a decision, we'll take a vote and you just got to get...
Then we'll change it later.
You've just got to get four. It's a math.
We're only going to vote on it once?
No. Twenty times.
Yeah, multiple times.
Does that include the demolition of a building in the historic district?
What?
What?
What? You know, it's past his bedtime, so...
Sellers, rescue squad funding is our last discussion item. I know you have been in touch with president of the rescue squad and you guys, we're all meeting tomorrow. Sorry?
Yeah, but I, my recommendation would be to not going, not going forward with the monies. I think they have enough money in reserve as well as reviewing their balance sheet, profit and loss statement. What was presented to us was a two-year timeframe and not a one-year, so what they were saying was $10,000 is really $5,000, and there were a number of questionable items in their balance sheet. And the other questionable items is that I don't understand how you can change your accounting information from one point in time to the next, that they're using QuickBooks and they went back and they changed some stuff.
I suspect that's what we'll talk about tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all the discussion items, is there any new business?
I'd like to talk about the business recruiter.
And I have...
And they're still here, they're still alive and away.
Can we have a motion in a second for that?
I think it's safe to say the amount of money that we've spent on maybe...
A motion to talk about the business recruiter?
Second.
I think second, fantastic.
Well, I would say we just found $10,000 that we weren't going to spend other than...
I just want to point, I just want to point that...
I have comments, but go ahead.
I want to point that we, right now, we have a contract with Main Street where the money would be rolled over to the CIT. That contract with Main Street, part of it, costs for business...
That contract with Main Street, part of it calls for business recruitment. That contract will be changing once, once we redo a contract with the Cid Board, and we don't know what portion of that contract's going to be for a business recruiter. So maybe 10,000, maybe 20,000, maybe 5,000, but we don't know what that number is. So we have to keep in mind that some of the services that Main Street currently does that the Cid Board probably won't do, which will increase the amount that they can spend for business recruiting on that, and that money will be rolled over. And I think anything we do with the business recruiter should be done through the Main Street contract. And I also feel that the business recruiter should report to the Cid Board, not to us. Even if we do put in more money, I still think it should flow through the Cid Board and not, not report to this board.
Well, I had a long discussion with Robin Fields, one of our remaining members in the audience here, and her concern was that the Cid would not be up and running quick enough to take on the responsibilities. And I know she said at the microphone, two or three years, they'd be ready to take that on, and I feel we simply can't wait. I felt we needed a business recruiter in this town two, three years ago, and for a variety of reasons, we didn't hire that individual. We decided at the meeting that Mr. Salmon referenced that we were going to cut it out of last year's budget but put it back in this year's budget because we were waiting for the results of the Cid discussion. Now we're going forward with the Cid, so I'd like to recommend that we get the money back in the budget again. And I actually had a discussion with trustee Bauer who recommended that we get somebody on as a contract basis, either a firm or a consultant, bring them in for six months, have them report to our village administrator, have the newly formed Cid Board work hand in hand with the village administrator, see how they do over that six months. If we like them, continue the contract with them. If the Cid Board feels they're ready because this person is, or this group is good, then the Cid Board would be comfortable taking it over. That could happen as well. So, and I want to tell an anecdotal story, you know, I, now, I am the only real estate agent, I'm clear on that, right? So I was driving with a new client this weekend, this is just anecdotal, and we're driving down the street and I had taken them through downtown Maplewood, I'm driving them down downtown South Orange, and I'm not going to say what kind of business it was, but they say, "Man, you have a lot of that kind of business." And it wasn't said in a really flattering way, and they said, "Man, that's not classy." And I wanted to bump my head against the windshield. I mean, we really need to get a good retail mix in here. We have the two stores here, they're award-winning stores, we need more stores like this. We need to be a destination, and they need more retail establishments around them, so people will find this to be a destination and they'll get more foot traffic and more customers. But we're, we're close, but we're just not there yet, and I really, truly feel we need the business recruiter. I don't want to be driving around with people saying things to me like, "Look what you got here, eh, not so good," you know? They, I, I need as a Realtor to have the businesses driving here.
Well, we have two, two types of businesses that are oversubscribed here.
Yeah, right, and it was one of the two that was highly oversubscribed, but I really feel the businesses, we really, really need to do this, and I urge everyone to, I guess I'll pass a motion, to get the money back in the budget. It would be $10,000, I'd anticipate we'd use that for the end of this year, starting in August, so we have time to get the Cid Board up, and then next year we allocate the full 40,000.
Nancy, I hear you, I'm there with you in regards to the critical need for someone to be dedicated and focused on, because there are other things that we're looking at from the personnel and legal committee, you know, that are not prepared to go in here now. I would be, I would only right now support the example you gave is to have a consultant or...
A contractor.
Or contractor employee.
Yeah, that is not an employee of ours.
Correct.
But, you know, with the six months, and that, that works. That can be something immediate, but at the same time, it does not impact some of the structural things we're doing as part of the restructuring of the village staffs and departments, because we're, we're doing that, that's been ongoing now, and I don't, wouldn't want to add anyone on as a direct employee without the process that we're doing completely.
I love, I mean, I'd love trustee Bauer's idea to have the person or the firm on for six months, and that way you're drawing them out to see if you like them or not, and they're not a permanent employee.
I would still, I would still prefer that they report to the Cid Board, not to this board or to the village administrator, and I also see problems with the village, whoever this business recruiter is, they have to work with the landlords, because the landlords are the ultimate decision maker, not us. So recruiter can bring in all the businesses if he's not, if he's not...
Right, I agree with that, they do have to work with that.
And the Cid Board's going to have to work, because they're going to have landlords on the Cid Board. It makes much more sense for the Cid Board to enter that contract, and I'm fine with figuring out how much money we can do that and how much comes out of the Main Street contract, but I really feel that it has to come from the Cid Board. And I could just see if the board of trustees had a recruiter reporting to us and we found, and they, and this guy brings in a business that competes directly with one of the current businesses, that's not a business that necessarily brings in more. So for instance, they bring in Williams Sonoma, there's maybe somebody who won't be happy about that, and also, you know, how did the village bring in a competition to knock out somebody? So I think the Cid Board should be on board, I think the Cid Board with the land, with the property owners and the business owners can give the direction that a recruiter needs, and I don't think it should come from us in any way, shape, or form.
And my only concern was that people that worked on the Cid Committee were very concerned about taking that on day one because they don't want to set themselves up for failure.
I think like ultimately one of the things I had said last meeting, you know, we could debate the semantics and the hierarchy of this till we're blue in the face, I think the question really is a funding mechanism. Do we put in, where's the money coming from? Are we putting the money in the budget or not? Or finding the money in the budget as the case may be because the budget is set, but being that what I heard earlier, the $10,000 that was potentially going to the Rescue Squad, which we...
It's not budget, that 10,000 was not budget?
I understand, but we had found it. We were, we had agreed we would, we would find it and utilize it. Now we're saying we don't need that.
Yes, we did say that.
So that found, money that's been found, quote unquote, can now very easily be utilized for this purpose without increasing taxes and yet providing the service that our merchants are asking for.
Trustee Levinson, trustee Goldberg is right about the $10,000, because I remember Barry, our administrator, when we did, you did say that there would have been $10,000 identified in the budget if we were going, if there was, we made the decision to fund that amount to the Rescue Squad that there was in a...
Yeah, actually, what was the...
That money was in a particular line item, right?
Well, it was, when I said it, it was, I think, 7,500 of it would have come from the reductions in the other funding, and then I said I could find the other 2,500.
Right.
We've now restored 3,000 of that, so now it's, I'd have to find 5,500. If we're talking 10, whatever the number is, but...
Not to put you on the spot, when we met last Friday, you said you probably had some wiggle room and you could find that?
Well, there's certainly, you know, the further you get into the budget, the further you have a better handle on where you are and certain things that you forecast and project may or may not happen. There's, you know, we've talked about and I had included monies for the plan or relating to the master plan which remain there, but they were based on, you know, at the point, by the time we get around to that, there may be excess funding there. You know, if, you know, if you're telling me 40,000, that's a lot bigger issue if we're talking about getting...
Well, it's 10 for this year.
Somebody getting on board like that, then that's, that's certainly much more manageable.
So I guess I would move that we put $10,000 back in the budget for the business recruiter.
Not back, it's there.
Fine, 10,000.
Fine.
Identifying.
Identify.
Identify, yes.
I would second that.
Can we have a roll call for that, please? I still want to do additional...
Yeah, the money's not the issue.
Right.
Trustee Rosner has identified the issue, and the issue is who does this person report to?
I just want to do a roll call because it potentially involves money.
But there's still discussion.
Yeah. We still need to pass it in the, in the budget.
I would like to know who will give them the recruiter direction of what to do and how to go and monitor them. Who on the board is going to do this?
I mean, the only, I tend to agree with trustee Rosner, but the problem is we don't have a Cid Board yet and we don't have an executive director, so how can it be anybody for the first six months other than us?
Well, the Cid Board, we, we could appoint a Cid Board by June. We should, we have, we've done all the interviews, we can agree to appoint them in June.
Oh, the interviews were done?
Yeah, that's going to be discussed.
And the Cid Board could be appointed, and we're ready to make a recommendation in executive session tonight, so, but we could appoint them, you know, either their first meeting in June, I guess, or last meeting in May, I don't know, whatever, but, and, so we could put, so that Cid Board could get a direction, but I, I think ultimately this has to come from the Cid Board. I just, I cannot see it coming from this board, and I can't see Tack now more responsibility to the administrator.
Yeah, he can't, he's got so much on his plate now.
So are you making a friendly amendment to Nancy's motion that this person be supervised by the incoming board of the Cid?
Yes.
I would second that.
You don't get to second it, she does.
Yeah, I know.
Nancy, do you accept that?
Yes, we'll have to talk to the Cid Board once we figure out who the Cid Board is. I want to make sure they're comfortable with it, because I don't want to set them up to have something they can't do.
Well, that's what we're doing. They already said that, so that's what we're doing. We're kind of overriding that concern and saying it's...
Okay, I've accepted it.
Okay. All right.
Good eye contact.
Trustee Goldberg.
Roll call.
Can we call a roll, please? Yeah, the good thing is...
Can we restate it?
Yeah.
And so you understand this is a sense of the board now, and when you actually make a hire, that's when there's a resolution and you, and you act on it formally.
Well, this would be a consulting, I'm assuming right now...
It's contracts, consulting contracts.
So when you, when you take that action, you adopt the resolution, that's when you're acting formally. Right now, this is a sense, sense of the board, because you want to do that ultimately.
But I think it should be restated or stated.
Sort of what the parameters of the sense of the board is. Exactly.
Do you want to restate it?
Okay, so we're going to put fine $10,000 for the rest of this year. We're going to hire someone for six months, which would be, we had allocated $4,000, it would be $20,000 for the six months.
We're going to contract with someone.
Contract, contract with a con, with a consultant. It's way past my bedtime. And...
It's only 10,000 now?
10,000 for this year. Okay, 10,000 for this year, we can talk about next year, next year.
But how is 10, I'm sorry.
But 10's not going to work if we're going to hire someone or hire a contract for six months. You don't want to hire them for three months. I want to give someone six months.
It might be four months by the time you, it really is going to be about four months. But if you're going to put the committee together and they're not even going to, by the time you, you do the resolution and everything, June is gone.
They could have their first meeting in June, and that's certainly feasible.
I anticipated someone coming on in August.
But you still have to find the person, you know, there's a process.
Right.
You know, you can't...
We can decide on the date.
Yeah, we can work on the date, just put money in there through, through, for August.
But I just want to make it clear that he's going to be challenged to find anything more than 10,000.
For this year.
For this year.
That is correct.
I'm only talking about this year.
Yes, for this year, we want to talk about this year? Okay, we'll talk about this year.
Yes.
And he's going to report to the Cid.
He or she.
He or she, or it, or the entity.
And our, our fabulous clerk will clean that up language up nicely tomorrow.
Can we call the roll on that, please?
Certainly. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Yes.
Trustee Gold...
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yep.
And trustee Rosner?
Yes. Who's paying for the babysitter?
That's 10,000.
Who else are you?
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
I have another item of new business, and that is the impervious surface ordinance, which was referred to planning and zoning, and then I had a report back from planning and zoning, which asked Mr. Rother to draft the ordinance, and Mr. Rother said he had not been directed to do that. Can we direct Mr. Rother to draft the ordinance based on the policy recommendations that were forwarded to this board by the environmental commission?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I thought he wasn't interested in the way that's... I'd love, if somebody had sent it to me, I'll, I'll, I'll put it in ordinance form. I have no problem.
I thought we had it.
Can we, can someone move and second that?
I move.
I move.
No, you move, I second, this is your thing.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Trustee Bauer moves, Davis Ford seconds.
All in favor?
Wait, what are we moving? Directing village council to write to draft the ordinance?
I thought it was written already.
Why does he need a resolution?
I thought it was written.
I thought it was written.
So why do we need a resolution? Why don't you just clean it up?
It's not a resolution, it's just a consensus in the board. I had a motion and a second.
It's going to be an ordinance, and it's going to planning and zoning, because you requested that, trustee Gold.
I got it, I got it.
He has it.
He's okay, we'll get him.
Okay.
The council said he was waiting to direction the board, so there was a motion and a second, and I asked for all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have your direction?
One last thing, I'm not going to...
Oh, I've got something, it's not last.
Okay, can I, I'll be quick. Because of the late hour, I will take this up at the next meeting, but the agenda process, we need to discuss it. I am not going to put it on the forum, I am verbally asking now it be put on the next agenda, because the forum doesn't, the process is not working. I'll get into the details next time, it's late, so I'll spare everyone the trouble now, but we definitely need to discuss the failed, or flawed process.
Next time, next week or next time, two weeks?
No, next regular meeting, the 30th.
Can you, can you move that and then someone second that?[1609.82]